I think that's this.
One minute.
She's from the middle street.
It's very.
We're.
Yeah.
You were.
Over there.
Yeah.
That's my name.
But not.
You're so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It looks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't like this.
It's.
The.
This is.
Yeah.
I can't.
Should.
Good. Okay.
Love you, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Under that.
Is there one more?
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's watch.
People.
They don't.
You should.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We didn't.
Well, I know that it was.
Hey. It is, uh, six o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it is, uh, six o'clock on Tuesday, March twelfth. And I will call this City of Lacey, uh, council work session to order. Um, first things first, uh, Mayor Andy Ryder is, is excused absent tonight, and we have two council members, I only see one now, who, uh, will be retaining remote. Before we get started, I'd like to read the land acknowledgement. We, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawson Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today who were absorbed or relocated into their tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors, uh, and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek and the traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to this history, the histories of dispossession, fourth removal, and a bridge treaty rights that allowed our nation, state, and city to develop as it is today. We recommend, we recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of eighteen fifty-four. Uh, and with that, can I please get a motion to approve the next agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Then that motion passes unanimously. Uh, tonight, on tonight's agenda, um, our first agenda item is our emergency services update, um, being delivered by, uh, Lacey Fire Chief Steve Brooks. Also want to, uh, you know what, actually, before we get started, is it okay if we just, because we have so many guests tonight, uh, is there a way we just do introductions with everybody? Is that okay? Okay, can we start here?
I'm Robin Vazquez, member of the Lacey City Council.
That Carol Lynn Cox, council member.
Lenny Greenstein, council.
Steve Brooks, Fire Chief for Lacey Fires.
Ben Miller Todd, Director of Emergency Services, Thurston County.
Angela Mackey, Director of Communications for Providence Swedish and the South Peja Sound.
Derek Goss, Chief Executive with Providence.
Bill Creesman, the Chief Medical Officer at Capital Medical Center.
I'm Shannon Kelly Fong, I'm the Assistant City Manager.
And I am Malcolm Miller, Deputy Mayor.
Oh, and one more.
I am Nick, Nick Dunning, uh, council member coming to you from Washington DC.
And, uh, we are also supposed to have Councilmember Stedman remote, hopefully he will join us soon. Uh, and with that, we can move on to emergency services update led out by Chief Brooks.
Well, and thank you Deputy Mayor, members of the council for, uh, having us back. I was looking back at our record, trying to believe it's been, I think, about ten months since we were here last May and sharing some of the challenges that we were facing in, um, particularly the, the medical services realm around, uh, the pre-hospital EMS and then the hospital volumes and, and the like. I know there's been a lot of change in the community since then with the opening of some new facilities and resources and some changes in practices. So what we were gonna do tonight actually is I'm gonna team up with, uh, Director Miller Todd from, uh, Thurston County Medic One, and I think, uh, we have slides available that we can walk through for our update. Um, and we can kind of use those concurrently, so.
Yep, and we discussed this ahead of time. We're actually gonna pass it over. We have a whole group, so not just emergency services, uh, but we're also gonna do, um, kind of healthcare in general. And I'm gonna hand it over to Bill Creesman, uh, with CMC, who's actually gonna kick it off, and we'll work our way down the table, uh, in order, so.
I'm. Who's going first?
I'm not usually the last person to hold the, you know, the, the mouse, usually goes beyond that, but, uh, uh, hi, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm going to check my technical skills tonight and.
Very close, uh, just need to hit the share screen button, the green.
Ah, so can I escape out of this?
Yep. And then go back one more.
Go back.
Go to the Zoom meeting.
Ah, so close. Share a screen.
Closed it.
So I might need to drive for a second. It looks like we closed out the presentation. So if you wanna pass the mouse over here, I'll get it started before y'all. Just give me a second.
I have this memo.
I'm a technical doctor.
Uh, go ahead. I got the control L right. So, uh, so I am from a multi-care and Capital Medical Center. Um, uh, we have done a lot in the last two and a half, almost three years since we acquired Capital Medical Center. The most important is not something that's being presented tonight. The most important thing from my perspective is that, uh, multi-care is a nonprofit Capital Medical Center, which for thirty-five-ish years was a for-profit hospital, has now become, thank you very much, nonprofit.
If you just wanna hit control L when you're.
I did. Control L. Is it not, is it sharing?
Yeah, it's shared.
Sharing. Oh, okay. So.
Then hit control L, one more time, I think it'll work this time.
I think we're trying to get to a full.
There you go, perfect.
There we go, okay. So, um, we have done a lot in the community and really are excited about this, and so, uh, I've got, uh, some, some exciting things. The first one is, this is our new Indigo Clinic, which opened up in Hawks Prairie. Uh, for those of you who have experienced indigos, my hope is it was a good experience, and that to some extent it reminded you of Starbucks. That really these are designed to be, uh, customer service, fast turnaround, uh, it's an urgent care. But, uh, but we've done things differently, and we've set up this brand, this, uh, Indigo, all across Washington State and been very successful with it. And so we're really happy that we've been able to continue that here in the community, um, uh, locally. We also have, as there was some mention, uh, built a new emergency department that's not too far away from here. Uh, this is a project which we've been working on for the last two years. It opened on December fifteenth and has been just a, a, a great success for us. Um, and, and hopefully helps the community. We've done a lot with Providence, uh, collaborating on it. And so when I look at an off-campus emergency department, which is what this, we call this, is this falls under the hospital license. It's regulated with Capital Medical Center. It has all of the same rules and the same equipment and the same types of people. It's just not physically connected to Capital Medical Center. And so we see ambulances. We take care of, uh, uh, all variety of illnesses and injuries, um, all ages, just like any other emergency department would do. This is a, um, uh, a graphical image. It turned out very much like this. This is what you would see if you're driving down, uh, Pacific and, uh, Gomp, uh, uh, Drive. Um, this is, it's just another emergency department. We, th- these are photos of the inside of it. It looks just like any other new sparkling emergency department. Um, it has physicians, it has, um, PAs and nurse practitioners, nurses, technologists, the same thing you would get. Uh, the, the, the middle image here is of a CAT scanner. It's got CAT scan, it's got ultrasound, it's got, it's, it's an emergency department. There are, uh, some important things I wanna share about it, so, um, uh, the most important is that, uh, we have done very little advertising. We wanted to let it ramp up in terms of volume organically. Uh, EMS has helped us with that. That, uh, we have a need, as we've seen in the paper a couple of years ago, a need for more emergency department beds. Uh, we are seeing ambulance traffic, and I'll, I'll have some statistics in just a minute about that. Um, right now, we're averaging about sixty patients per day coming through the off-campus ED. That compares to our hospital emergency department, which averages about eighty per day. And so this has essentially doubled the volume of patients that we're able to take care of.
You, you want questions as you go or at the end?
No, I'm happy to, to get interrupted. This is great.
Just sure, if you're handling about sixty, how, what is your capacity? What do you think you can handle?
So, uh, initially, the capacity is lower as we're, as we're developing workflows and really getting to know the, the, the people. Um, our ultimate goal is probably in the AD range, maybe eighty to a hundred. A hundred is probably pushing it. Uh, uh, but the way that we're able to see this many people is by having a quick turnaround. That people hopefully don't sit in the ED for many hours, and therefore, if we're, uh, if they're having a short length of stay, we can take care of another person right behind them.
Dr. Creesman.
Yeah.
Have you had any challenges staffing this facility?
We've done well staffing. We have not had gaps, uh, but we've, we've also had a year to, to plan for the opening. And so there, uh, we hired many people knowing they'd be starting work in the future, and that's worked out well. We haven't, we've got essentially a, a separate set of nurses and technologists working here than our core hospitals, so we didn't have to rob from one to staff the other. Um, but the physicians and the nurse practitioners and PAs are all the same. They rotate between both EDs.
What I understand, you guys had, uh, to relocate some to come here, or is that right?
We hired more, and then they, they work in both facilities. But yeah, we've hired, we, I, I think the previous slide had it. We've hired, uh, okay, uh, we've hired, uh, about sixty people to work in the ED right now, and it's still gonna grow. We're still gonna add a couple more.
They've been, they've been finding housing okay here and.
I have birthday problems. Yeah, yeah. And, and love to bring in new jobs.
And then, real quick, you might wanna just drag the images, uh, over so we can see the, the Lacey comparison. Perfect.
Okay. Uh, so this is just a comparison of the different off-campus EDs. They look exactly the same. The footprints are the same, the paint color is the same. Uh, whether you go to Bonnie Lake or whether you go to, uh, South Hill or Federal Way. And so I just wanna give you an idea that, uh, just in the, in middle December until, at the January, we had seen five hundred and fifty patients, which at that point was only thirty-five patients a day. Each month is growing. So when I tell you we're seeing about sixty, that's, that's in the, uh, it's in March. Fifty percent of them are kids, which is, uh, a- as you'll notice, higher than any of the other off-campus EDs. That's important to us because we are adapting our coverage of who's actually working in the ED, and so we're gonna be increasing our pediatric staffing to be able to take care of that. The door-to-dock time is the time from when a person comes in and registers till they're seen by a physician or a nurse practitioner or a PA. And so it's seven minutes. That's how we get this quick turnaround, is by getting eyes on them quickly, getting an initial set of orders, whether they need labs or medications or imaging, and get that process started as quickly as possible. Um, and then our target is to get the average person, uh, in and out within two hours. Uh, whi- which really means that people with minor illnesses, we wanna get in much faster, and those who require a, a lot of evaluation will be the, the longer ones. We are not at our goal. We're at a hundred and fifty minutes right now. We wanna be down under a hundred and twenty minutes, but we're, we're learning and we're, we're working on that. The other thing you'll notice is the EMS volume. Most of our off-campus EDs are seeing about one percent of their volume in terms of ambulance traffic. We're seeing twelve percent. It, it's a dynamic of the community, just not having sufficient ED resources. But it makes it look much different because, uh, patients coming in by ambulance have a greater, uh, potential for being admitted to the hospital, whether it be for an orthopedic problem or chest pain, uh, shortness breath, those kind of things. So we are, we are admitting more to the hospital than any of our other EDs. But again, we're, we're learning from this and we're adapting to it, so. And then the bottom graph is just a trend over the first month and a half of the operation, and it's just going up. Um, uh, maybe relocate the video. Oh, it's just the same one. Here we go.
What are the factors that are affecting the discharge time the most?
Yeah, that, uh, I would say there are two. One of them is the fact that this is just new and we're, so we're learning our operations, uh, developing workflows and relationships with, uh, right now, we've transported patients to Providence. We've transported patients to our, uh, hospital in, uh, at Capital. We transport patients to Mary Bridge. Those processes all, all take time. Um, but I think the other thing is that, in addition to the people and the relationships, that we are, we got this year faster than we had expected. And so, um, it's good for, from a business side, uh, but we were sort of expecting it to be slower and work through these at a, at a more tempered pace. But there is, there's a need out there and made feelings. Um, I've got a couple of slides here that, uh, frequently ask questions and similar data. Um, I, I'll run through them, but really, uh, what I'd like to do is make sure that we have time for Providence, make sure we have time for Medic One. Um, are there questions from so far that, what I've presented that I can help with?
One, oh, you, you mentioned you do things differently at, at this ER and at your Indigo Clinic. What is, what is different?
Let me give an example. Yeah, thank you. Uh, at the Indigo Clinic, as an example, when a person comes and checks in at the front desk, the person who checks them in is also their medical assistant, who will take them back to a room, will, uh, will get their vital signs and get them situated in the room. If the, um, provider needs, uh, a chaperone or something, they will be the same person. So it's one person following a patient all the way through the process. That's different than we do in our other urgent cares or in our clinics, where you have one person checks a person in, another MA who does the rooming and does that work, you might have another person do a checkout. The reason we do that in Indigo and have a single person following through is that continuity, uh, I think is appreciated by our patients. But it also, uh, means that, that, that we're not having to introduce multiple people along the way. That the same story heard at the front desk is then dealt with in the room and on the way out by a person who's, uh, educated and trained to do all of those steps. And so, uh, it was an experiment and it has worked out well for us, but it's, but it's not traditional.
Thank you.
You, uh, so you, you're already seeing about sixty people, which the, the location's great, so you probably don't need a lot of advertising, but that's not really that far away from a hundred, which you're saying is kind of where, you know, you're starting to reach some capacity issue. So is there already some planning for what happens when you're, you're just seeing capacity issues and can't see that many more people?
Uh, a- absolutely. I, I think to get to a hundred is gonna take us a little bit of time. Uh, I hope it's gonna take us some time. Uh, fingers crossed.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Uh, so, uh, but yes, uh, one of the biggest things, and one of the things that the council could help with, and, and Darren and I and Angela have talked with many different groups about is actually the use of an emergency department. That part of the reason our volumes are high is, is, uh, because we're seeing things that don't have a, an acuity that would need an emergency department. They might do well with an urgent care center, or they might do well with virtual, uh, seeing a provider over your phone. Um, I think there are a lot of ways to access care, and the emergency department is simple, and it can provide very comprehensive care, but it's expensive. So I would love to be able to do more public education to really identify where people should go, in what conditions, and then provide those access points. You said fifty-one percent, uh, pediatric. Was that, is that, is that the design? Was, was this facility designed primarily for pediatric or how's that? It was, it's not the design, but we had actually expected that the numbers would be higher in this community, based on the demographics of who lives here. Um, and so we're actually working with Mary Bridge, uh, to potentially bring some pediatric physicians to come and help us out.
Sure.
During the high volume, a- and typically, kids are seen in the evenings, uh, after school, after sports, after clubs, and so that's what we're looking to get some help.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'll take it, take it to the next, uh, level here. Um, so what I wanted the council to know that, uh, Providence and Multi Care are, are in routine contact around our ERs. It's our ER directors are talking, our administrative teams are continuing to, to, uh, learn from each other and share best practices. Uh, what we've witnessed, uh, since the ER was, we have seen a small decrease in our ER volumes. Um, one of the things we spoke of last time is we continue to work on throughput within the hospital. And so just to put in perspective, last week, we discharged four hundred and fifty patients in that week. And so as we continue to try to move patients into lower cost or lower care settings, so skilled nursing facilities, long-term cuter care centers, those are challenged. That backs up into the hospital, which then backs up in our ER to get people who need a bed. Um, what we witnessed from the ER opening is small decrease in volume, but we continue to see then the acuity rise of what is coming into St. Peter. And so I think, it was, you asked last time, some of the trends that we continue to see that are not unexpected, but changing the way we practice is a lot more around behavioral health and a lot more around narcotics and overdoses. And so these seem to be more prevalent today than we've seen in the past, and that continues up through the, when they're, uh, in the tower. Um, our Lacey footprint still remains the same, so, um, as Dr. Creesman said, we continue to encourage people to, uh, use lower cost setting. So we have virtual, virtual care available. Anyone does a virtual visit and it's deemed they need to be seen in emergency room, that cost is free, and so we would not bill that patient if, uh, they need to be seen. We have express care at Lacey, we have immediate care, primary care at Lacey, and we also have our, uh, cancer centers here in Lacey as well. Um, what I did wanna just chat a little bit about some of the innovations, because what we spoke last time is, uh, staffing continues to be a challenge, and we've actually innovated a couple of areas that I wanted to just highlight with the council, and so we'll move to that next time. It's me, huh? Um, from our emergency, I've kind of spoken through most of these things. We wanna continue to be one of the options here in the community, and, uh, grateful that extra capacity has been added. Allows us to really, uh, hone in on where we need, not everyone needs an, uh, uh, off-campus ER, but not everyone needs an on-campus ER either. And so I think we'll continue to work together on one of those key messages out in our community and those that seek our care. Um, we are completing an integrated master plan to address our future growth. We know these communities are growing. These take time, capital intensive. And so hopefully at our next update, um, with the, uh, usually it's about every ten months, I think we're coming. Uh, we'll have more information on where, where we see growth, uh, but emergency, there are mornings where we do have empty beds in our emergency room. Uh, that, they don't last long, and so we're continuing to work towards, um, uh, making those available. Uh, just from emergency by the numbers, we, we see on average about a hundred and seventy patients per day, uh, but the acuity is much higher than what we've seen in the last few years, especially as we have pushed more and more avenues around lower cost of care. What is left then is in, uh, is a high acuity. And we see about twenty percent of our visits are avoidable, and so we continue to, as people are leaving, to try to educate um, and to make sure that those, those avenues, uh, that they're aware of. Uh, and then for us, I've talked about the behavioral health and the narcotics.
You say avoidable, you mean they, they could have gone to a lower level setting, right?
Yeah.
Lots of dollars, nervous, that kind of thing.
And those are typically the ones that will wait the longest, and that's typically the ones that I hear from. Uh, and so that's, for us, it's, um, one, we'll tr- we'll continue to triage around acuity first, uh, but it's those lower cost settings, uh, or just, we've got more work to do around that.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
I believe we talked, maybe last time you all were here, about the plan to set up, uh, a Medic One team, I think, in sort of the foyer, if you will, to be able to get people off of the ambulances faster. How's that working in terms of improving flow, getting the ambulances back out? Maybe I'm jumping ahead in the presentation.
Yeah, I'll have you talk through on how's it working. Providence is covering that cost now, uh, just to make sure, so if we have, uh, someone from Medic One onsite, we will cover that cost so those units can get out into the community.
And I just wanted to clarify a point. The contract is actually with Olympic Ambulance.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
But in my opinion, it's been working well. We have needed it less. Um, we've talked, talked about this, about all the different opportunities for care, primary care, specialty care. This is the column that we're just continuing to, to push around urgent, express care, virtual. Uh, about one out of five of our primary care visits are now virtual, and we'll continue to try to see that trend grow. We recognize not everyone needs a virtual visit, but many do, and so that's the area that we're continuing to focus on, just to make sure that we're keeping our emergency room available for true emergencies. A couple of other areas that we've innovated with is the, uh, we've talked about, uh, the foyer, uh, from the medic. Um, we've added quite a few other services around, uh, in our emergency room, palliative care, care management. Uh, and then I've talked about a little bit some of the security challenges that we've seen. Uh, our goal is to try to add as many services in our ER as we can, so they're not needing to then go for a consult visit the next day. If we can see that they're in our ER and then discharge them, that is the ideal situation for us. Our goal is to, one, not have them come back, but two, to make sure they're getting their needs met in one visit. But we have had to do quite a, a lot of work around our security, or, this is where, this is our hottest spot for our highest volume of assaults against staff is in our ER. Some workforce innovation, uh, we spoke this last time, but two areas I just wanted to highlight. One is we've piloted a remote nurse up on the floors, and this is actually, we're looking at, uh, in some of our other areas in our ER. And that's really allowed us to, so, uh, in concept, the nurse is working from home and is available to our patients, uh, uh, at any time. And so they're working collaboratively with the nurses on the floor. And so if a patient needs a nurse, they can call them, they're, uh, available on a screen. It's actually helped us from a teaching standpoint, as a lot of our nurses are newer on the floors. Uh, the best benefit is it's allowed us to tap into workforce that no longer has wanted to work. And so we had posted about fifteen positions, we had about two hundred and fifty applicants for these positions. And so we're piloting this in our hospital, and we have great success, and I suspect we'll scale this further. And then the other area is just a tremendous amount of workforce training in partnership with South Sound Community College, St. Martin's University, Centralia College, similar to Multi Care. We have, uh, created quite a few work training programs where we're paying them onsite to get the training that they need. I, I thought it's had one more, but that's it. Um, from a staffing standpoint, things are much better for us, both on retention and then just our fill rates overall.
Yeah.
As you're using, um, virtual visits more and kind of offering that to people as a way to get care faster and maybe not clog up the ER if they don't need to, have you been able to provide translation and interpretation services when people have a language access need?
No, we can't.
Have you had any problems getting interpreters when you've got those, like, I call and I want an appointment in a half hour? Is it easy to get an interpreter or are you having a hard time?
So we, we work with a company that has, uh, access to, I wanna say seventy different languages. Uh, not to say that we can get them at, um, all at the time we need them. And so we have had some challenges with that, but for the most part, I think we've been able to do, um, handle our language needs.
So if I call, and it's apparent as I'm trying to set up my virtual visit, that I do not speak English, how do you let that person who's calling know that they can access an interpreter?
I don't know that answer, so I will follow up. It's a great question. We'll follow up with you on that.
I can say that one thing that I, um, I've noticed is you, the way you guys have positioned your, your, um, clinics throughout the city. Um, I think what, one of the things that it does, because there's an Indigo, there's, uh, Providence over there in Hawks Prairie, which is at the very base of an entire population out there.
Right.
Right? Uh, and then I believe there's a, a new Indigo across the street, right? And then you go down to Yum Highway. Uh, and so it, it seems as if your positioning has, has made it so that, um, you know, those high volume communities, um, have access, like immediate access and don't have to try to make it all the way to St. Peters. Try to make, you know what I mean? So, so if, if, if somebody out in Horizon Point really needs to see a doctor, they just go to Yum Highway. Right? If somebody out in Hawks Prairie needs to see somebody, they, they, they do it right there on Marvin Road, right? So I think one of the things that that's, that's helped is, is, uh, probably saved us a few traffic accidents, people trying to rush to get to a hospital. Um, has probably shortened some of the emergency, uh, the response times that are needed, and so, so I, I really like that part. Um, and it sounds like you guys are trying to work out some of the, the internal things. Um, and, uh, I, I guess what I'm saying is we, we just really appreciate you being in the community.
Well, thank you for that. One of the things to your point is, we know primary care continues to be a challenge, so at all of our primary care sites, we have what's called immediate care, and those are walk-ins. For, uh, very similar to an urgent care model, we don't follow, uh, exactly their model, uh, but we recognize that if someone needs care, we can see them quickly and have them not be in our ER. That is success, in my opinion.
And it's really cool, so you can go online and put yourself in line virtually and then drive there, and so then you can walk in and almost immediately.
Do that from a haircut. I didn't know you could do that, uh, medical appointments.
Yeah, yeah, at the immediate care as you can.
The key message is, I think we're in a better state than we were ten months ago, both from an emergency services standpoint. Our units are getting out, uh, into the field, uh, more often. Staffing is better, and I think we've added capacity. Appreciate the Multi Care, uh, additions here in Lacey, and, uh, and then our collaboration continues to be strong, even though we're competitors. Uh, we've appreciated the, um, uh, collaboration.
That was my last question. Um, have you guys collaborated with the tribe? You know, they have, uh, plans for the new opioid clinic right there. Um, have you? Um, have you guys collaborated with them on how that flow might work once that's up and running?
We started discussions both with Chahalas tribe, cause there's uh in Lacey, uh South Lacey, their MAC clinic has opened and then the Nisqually tribe as well. Um, Nisqually is, is not far as long as the Chahalas tribe with their structure. Yeah.
Let me ask one more question. There might be a question for both of you, but I remember I asked this question, I think, last time you were here, but you're difficult to discharge.
Yes.
So you're, you're moving people through the emergency rooms and that's great. You're discharging, what, four hundred people in the last month? But do you still have a high number of people that it's hard to find a place for them to go in the community, whether it's an adult family home or a long-term care setting? And how many, like, what's the proportion of beds that that occupies? What's the ones that are hard to find a place for?
We do for us. That's about ten percent of our, about forty patients do not need the level of care in our hospital that could use a lower cost setting. It's not an area that we're experts in either. So we do have a skilled nursing facility in Olympia with about a hundred beds. We've maximized that. Uh, continuing to look at other options as well. Do we lease beds? Do we uh do a joint venture? Those discussions continue.
If you had your perfect number of beds, what, what would that be?
It would be more in the post-acute settings, a little uh after the hospital, I would probably, we're about a hundred, I'd like to see at least two hundred. Great question. We try to send them over next door.
And, and then we send them back. And that's the whole EMS problem, is they bounce back and forth. No, I think, uh, so, so we have two big problems. Uh, the big problem is the first one is people with behavioral health problems and significant medical problems, that we have places that will take behavioral health patients and places will take medical patients. The combination uh is
Rare to find care.
Yeah, it's very rare. So that's a problem. I think the other challenge we've got is, we talk about COVID. Uh, we still have problems with COVID temporarily shutting down skilled nursing facilities for new patients or rehab facilities. And so w- we don't even have the access to the full potential right now of, of um places for people to go. If I could get more social workers and more skilled nursing facility beds, I would be super happy. That's what we need. We don't really.
More than we actually need hospital beds? Just that you have a place to open the hospital beds by moving people out.
If we had a place for people to go where they will get good care of the right type, we would have more hospital beds. Absolutely.
And I know South Sound Behavioral Health Hospital is not here. Uh, they have typically been in our ER every morning. Uh, in partnership, looking to make sure that we can transfer patients over there. They've recently added uh additional capacity. And so that is helping as well.
Are they able to attend to people who have challenges like with physical health? Is there a behavioral health hospital, right?
They are, yeah, it's limited.
It's limited. So those stay in our tower.
Thanks.
So we still got some gaps to fill.
We have more work to do. Yeah, well said.
Excellent.
Uh, we're gonna slide into the EMS slides. We're gonna do a joint presentation. Chief Brooks and myself. Uh, I'll take that off with some of the statistics and just a quick update. I do wanna be cognizant of time uh in terms of
It's worked, I can.
Okay, alright.
We got time.
We'll burn through it, chat. Um, with that, I did wanna update uh on a couple of different uh items as we go through this. Uh, I do just wanna remind you, when you, when you put into context what the underlying population growth is, it's a huge, the key point uh when we're talking about forecasting. I bring this up routinely because there's some, some underlying components that we just need to, need to address. And this isn't, this isn't good, it's not bad, it's not any specific, it's just part of the population and the demographics underlying the growth in this county. Uh, with that being said, I'm sure you saw this last time that I brought this up. This is an important factor. Uh, I get asked, I'd say fairly routinely, on what exactly is the biggest component of the growth associated with EMS call volume? And a large number of times, uh, there's questions on, is it, is it homelessness? Is it, or, or houselessness, excuse me? Uh, or is it related to the opioid epidemic? Is it related to COVID? Is it related to any of these things? Uh, and I actually tie it back to the fact that we have an aging population with a very, very large uh aging, I would say, uh generation. Uh, based after we clear this next year, we're going to be having every one of our sixty-five plusers are in the, in the baby boomer generation. Our average uh response age is sixty-five. And I like to remind the community that public health did their job very, very well and people are living longer, healthier lives. But as they continue and as we have addressed some of those, uh, I would say easier to fix, it wasn't easy at the time. But as we've addressed some of our health concerns over time, uh, our patients are getting more and more acute. Uh, and so those that are entering the ER aren't in, at sixty-five having a heart attack and they aren't expected to live, they are expected uh to live, that the, the dynamics have changed in terms of mortality and morbidity associated with some of these components. And people become more complex as we're living longer. So the things that were easy to fix, uh, we've done really well. I call out public health on the things that are more complicated to fix, take a lot of time and resources uh as they, as people continue to age. That's just a fact of the underlying dynamic. Um, the other component to this is that we I, I've started to insert this one, uh, because it's come up in quite a few news, news articles. It's not only do we have a very large population over sixty-five right now, uh, we continuously talk about staffing. Um, and if we're going to look at it from a population dynamic standpoint, we cannot ignore the fact that uh, younger generations, millennial generations, Gen Z or generations are either having kids much later and mu- much fewer. Um, to call out nineteen fifty versus twenty nineteen, we've overhalved the birth rate alone uh between, between those two years. And so when we start looking at how we're going to staff uh continuously and look at maybe virtual options that are being presented or other things, staffing is a real, real issue. And as we continue to move on generation after generation right now, there's, there's a, there's a shrink, there's a millennial bust uh that's occurring.
Did you come to a conclusion who you're hauling the most?
Uh.
Or did, did it work itself? Are you saying that it is the seniors?
Uh, it is definitively, or without a doubt. Average age is sixty-five. Um, to get to an average, you have to have a significant number just above and just below. Uh, and that has continuously shifted upwards over the course of the last decade. Um, and so, um, that's just one of those underlying facts that is important to remember as we're looking at how we treat, treat patients and treat this county as a whole.
Is that similar in some of your other uh communities, like outside of this county?
Um, definitely similar. One thing that I do call out is what's Washington uh on this slide. And so when you look at the median age from nineteen eighty to twenty-ten, just to call it out, to have a shift in ten years is pretty significant. Um, and so is it not only happening, happening in our county? Is it not only happening in Washington State? Is it not only happening nationally? Uh, this is just one of those components that we're gonna have to address and it's gonna drive some of the call volume.
So as a large generation ages and needs more care, then the people who are providing the care, some of them are retiring. Cause they're getting that same age and the generations underneath are smaller, so the workforce
Yes.
Has a shortage.
I would, I do like to call out and I tout, uh, and this speaks to the, the paramedic group uh as a whole throughout Thurston County. Um, by and large, over seventy-five percent of those that have tr- have left uh Thurston County Medic One as a paramedic have retired. Uh, and that's, and it's not transferring to another service, it's not um looking for other jobs, it is actually retiring out. And so I, I like to call out that component. It's a great thing, but it's an, an issue we need to address.
What is the average age of an EMS person?
That is an excellent question. I don't want, I can guess, but I won't right here. Uh, and I will get back to you on that one.
Alright.
Uh, so those are some of the underlying components. Uh, another thing that I, I wanted to update here is that we have over, when I talked about the ten uh, there's a disproportionate growth in our call volume, call volume. So when I
Continue.
Yeah.
Um, I will be able to, I will need to be able to see council members uh gunning in.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Um, nope. Thank you for reminding me.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing that I do like to call out is that I, I brought up on the first slide that there's about an eighteen point four percent increase in population over a ten-year period in Thurston County, yet we've grown in call volume by forty point seven percent. Um, when we're looking at the disproportionate growth, some of that comes with age um in the, in the community, but also some of it comes with um trying to find a, a destination to find healthcare uh and a variety of other issues. Um, and so I just wanted to, so you know the call volume components, I wanted to call those out. Uh, another component and um I just, I like to bring this up because this is one of those years, twenty twenty-three. Inflation was kind of that, that buzzword that we were dealing with last year in terms of what's inflation gonna do, interest rates, all those kind of components. Um, when we do have harder economic times in this country, whether it's two thousand eight, two thousand nine, whether it's during the uncertainty during the pandemic in twenty twenty, or whether it's higher inflation, when we have economic pressures, we see a decrease or leveling in our call volume.
That's sad.
I, I see it as um the ACA did wonderful things. And this is, this is my opinion, nobody else. I think that the Affordable Care Act did wonderful things. I think there's still a gap uh because it addresses when people may be nervous to call nine-one-one or access care because they're worried about costs.
So it's not because there's fewer people on the lane?
No, it's not. And so, um, and this has been a historical trend that we can point to when we look at our, our call volumes over time. It was uh, just to point out, we did retract by about five hundred calls. Um, I also have a couple of the components that play into that and I want Chief Brooks uh to be able to talk to that. Because when we talked to you ten months ago, we wanted to find alternative destinations and people needed to be able to access healthcare in our community. And part of that is being able to address some of the calls that can be handled in alternative methods.
So are you suggesting that during harder economic times, people are not calling because they don't feel that they can afford the care?
I think there's a component that, that plays into that.
Correlation there?
Yeah. I, I believe there's a correlation. So can't, can't draw causation, but correlation.
Sure.
So. Uh, with that being said, I wanna hand it over. So we just talked about our call volume flattening and even retracting just a little bit in twenty twenty-three. I wanna hand it over to Chief Brooks to talk about some of the components involved with how, how are we addressing some of those call volumes and what are some of the alternative methods?
And actually, if you don't mind, can we hit the back? Can I go back on? I wanna go back to your stats slide. So, thank you, Ben. And I, I just wanna highlight again, I know it wouldn't be sensitive to time. And I was trying to think how to prioritize what I've seen, because I really do wanna celebrate some of the successes. We, I know the the thing we talked about most ten months ago was all the challenges. And I wanna just first call out uh some of the key things that I've seen. I wanna applaud our partners at uh Multi-Care Providence. I believe in the last ten months, uh, the levels of collaboration and partnership that I've seen in the community among the major players has been the best in my twenty years of service here in, in this community. And so I truly appreciate that. Uh, I think that that is taking us in the right direction on uh finding solutions at, at all kinds of levels. But um in highlighting this, this was a pleasant surprise in some ways. It also tells, it sends a bit of a mixed message candidly about, uh, we, we managed in a single year to uh has been alluded to between twenty-two and twenty-three to kind of flatten a curve or even appear to have a regression in call volume. And uh just for context, for uh those who aren't familiar, our agency, Lacey Fire District serves not only the city of Lacey. It's about half of our population, but we have about a hundred and eight thousand total, so about a third of the county's total population. So we're a pretty good proxy of what's going on in the community. And uniquely, we have uh the highest uh by significant uh margin of adult family homes, skilled facilities, all of the licensed facilities that when we were here ten months ago, I talked to you about were driving a lot of the volume for those lower acuity calls. So things like uh skilled facilities that re- that call on our providers to come in. Maybe they're facing their own staffing challenges or they have elements that they're just not able to care for. And so those patients either require a transfer out uh or consultation of some kind. And um so the slide that he had, that Ben had progressed to, to talk about our support services division, that was an approach that we took at the end of twenty twenty-one, if you look at where the volumes sit, uh to try to come up with some alternatives. And I just wanna give a shout out, it's two members uh of our organization that were non-traditional responders. Uh, again, to put things in context, an average volume for a response unit in our agency is somewhere between two thousand and thirty-five hundred calls in a given year. Um, is what one of our aid units or engine companies can reasonably serve. Um, the numbers here, the reason I call it out is because it's a, a message that I have to be careful about, because candidly, there are about somewhere between eighteen hundred and two thousand interventions or responses that are no longer reflected here. Because the two members of our support services division, we can quantify objectively that they have actually diverted that call volume away from the nine-one-one system. So it's things like they're going in and working with uh those skilled facilities, uh high utilizers that are in single-family homes to get their families or loved ones the support they need to be able to keep them in home or find alternative resources. So we're actually talking internally about how do we better quantify that, because saying that we took away those calls versus we handled them in a different way sends a very different message. And so because we removed them from a nine-one-one roles, we basically were able to answer or take care of those. We'll use two thousand as the round number uh calls with only two professionals who are not EMTs or paramedics, which has been our typical responder, but one has a background in social work. And uh one basically is, is a utility player, if you will, that has licensure, um came from the state, uh worked for the State Department of Health uh and so, or excuse me, social health services for the licensing components. And so they're able to go in, target the need of these patients who nine-one-one or the ER or inpatient care is not the appropriate level and redirect them, find alternative resources. Uh, and so we're continuing to see the value of that. They're now consulting with multiple agencies in the region to try to help replicate this. Do you, do you think that um in the future, that they will be able to shave off more than four percent? Well, a- and so candidly, for us, that actually represents, so this is the total county volume. Our volume uh is at about eighteen thousand or projected to be eighteen thousand this year. And so it's actually been closer to ten percent of our agency's volume in a single year that they were able to reduce.
Okay.
So we probably can't sustain ten percent year over year, but it flattened the entire county curve. Again, our call volume being about a third of the county's entirety. And so we think as they continue to empower the other agencies to help them on similar paths, particularly Olympia and Tomwater, the other urban and suburban areas that have similar facilities, that we'll continue to flatten or bend that curve. And it's doing it with, for example, one or two providers in our case, instead of having to stand up another response unit, which is either two or three providers per day times four shifts. So we're talking eight to twelve responders. So the cost savings to the community for funding those is critical as well. And it leaves those engine companies, those aid units, the others uh in service and available for the things that only they can do. Historically, it was not uncommon for us to have a fire in a given service area and the engine company that would be closest to that fire um is actually on an aid call, a medical call, and was not able to respond. And so a, a unit had to come from further away. So there are all these ripple impacts that we think are gonna improve service uh delivery, community-wide. Um, just because of some targeted approaches that are addressing some of these things that were, it's, it's not that we need more healthcare, it's that we need more coordination of the care. And so uh, I think that's a huge one. And I, I don't wanna take away Vince Thunder about some of the uh impacts of the new facility, in particular, the OSET as well, because I think uh some of the information that was already shared by our other representatives shows the need, the demand. I think that's also reflective of what we saw with the disproportionate demand at the OSET from EMS volume and delivery. So I think, I think you have that in some of the slides. So I'll get back to Ben, but I just wanted to highlight those efforts that we think are, are really paying dividends.
Thank you. Uh, with that, uh, oh, it's very sensitive, sorry. Uh, with that, I did wanna call out a couple of things that had been asked uh about what the entryway looked like, just some of those components. One thing that I did want to call out, uh, and then I'm very happy with it, if you look from the trajectory, if you look at it from twenty-two, or excuse me, twenty to twenty-one to twenty-two to twenty-three on this, we again saw a flattening. So we weren't consistently growing uh in terms of our longer wait times. This is a graph of those calls that are over forty-five minutes. Uh, we look at forty-five to an hour, an hour, two, an hour and a half, uh, an hour and a half to two hours and two hours to three hours. Uh, and so in terms of the lack of growth in twenty twenty-three, again arresting that, that growth in terms of the wait times is something that we really needed to address. I think that speaks to the overall trajectory. We're hoping to get to a place of where we're, we're gonna be able to have a downturn and which was a significant component of what we were discussing last time. It is less necessary at this point in time to spin up the entryway process. It's a little bit different. Uh, and I don't wanna speak to it specifically outside of the relationship between Providence and Olympic, but that has been transitioned out of the public sector into a relationship between Olympic and Providence, and it's spun up when needed uh at this point in time, which is, which is a benefit to the system when it is, when it is necessary. Like a release valve, so to speak to that. Uh, additionally, uh, I did wanna just point out here, I am gonna minimize this just for a second. I'm gonna slide it over. So when we're looking at the disparate, this is uh year-to-date, so twenty twenty-three total data versus year-to-date twenty twenty-four. So we looked at January and February. When you're looking at this, uh, the OSET started in December, I'd say, and when I say OSET, excuse me, I mean, uh, the standalone ED uh involved in Pacific, that started in middle of December. And so the first full month of its operation would have been January and then into February, uh, when we're looking at this data. So uh, we uh ultimately did see a significant transition, I would say uh, a distribution of our patient population over that two-month period, which has helped to additionally, early data that really I didn't wanna publish but just talk to, uh, early data shows an additional trajectory of the decreasing in wait times as we're able to spread our call volume out across all three of those local uh local hospitals. So when you're looking at the top, there was a reduction of about nine percent, uh, just to do the, the quick math on it, um, in terms of the proportion distributed, distributed to St. Pete's last year into the first two months of this year. Uh, Capital Medical Center saw an increase of about one and a half to two percent. And then we also saw, if you notice, the green line down at the bottom, I wanted to call out the off-campus ED. Uh, we saw uh them picking up about seven point two percent. And keep in mind, when you're looking at this specific data, this is the public lens. And so when you saw the, I, I don't want to miss mixed message, the, the messaging on this, uh, MultiCare brought up that they had about eleven point two-ish percent of their population that was being seen. Uh, the, the discrepancy there is private versus public. This does not include the, the public data, or excuse me, the private data.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, and so these are, these are public figures. And so it speaks to the distribution and the need in the community for those resources uh, to be utilized. So. With that, that's the end of the presentation. I'll open up any questions and.
The only thing I will add is I do want to call out a couple of our private partners in particular that uh, I was here and I think ten months ago, I told you one of my biggest concerns were the unknown through the uh, the potential impacts, if you will, of the OSET. Because as being the service provider, that, our headquarters station here, the one closest to City Hall is the busiest station in, in the county among all the agencies. And we were concerned about having, you know, an additional hundred patients coming into an OSET about what the impact would be if they were not able to handle the acuity and they required these transfers out. And so I was pretty vocal in my concerns about that and talked with their staff, and they were gracious to us. Uh, you saw that they have had an unexpectedly high volume of uh, EMS patients coming in, and as reported, their acuity is high. Candidly, the impacts to our agency have been um, minimal because our partners at Olympic Ambulance um, have been able to step up to that. They've staffed up for it, and they've been handling the vast majority of those transfers when they are required uh, and doing that in a timely fashion. And so I, I do feel like I should in public uh, give them the accolades for that. We also have another uh, new resource that's impending. I think they're working through their final licensure and certification here, but there'll actually be a third private provider at Northwest Ambulance who is under contract with the OSET, who will help with those transfers as well. So that private partnership is also, I think, doing a great job of helping to mitigate the impacts on the public side. So again, that we remain more available for those nine one one responses.
Yeah, I remember one of your primary concerns was uh, people going out on a call, and then that call, um, they don't need to go to a hospital or sitting in an ambulance, and now another call comes in and you wouldn't be able to, to, you know, service that person in or reach good service times. Uh, it sounds like you guys were able to pivot some of that, uh, and divert some of that because of your, um, uh, I guess your, your pilot intervention where they can, you know, you can determine whether or not they need to have a car out there or be transported.
So it's certainly part of it. And this issue of once they are transported, going to the appropriate destination and being able to reduce those drop times. And again, I've seen some of the preliminary data, Ben's talking about it. I think with the OSET now, in fact, you'll see those wait times, those turnaround times continue to decline pretty dramatically. So that's, those are all, again, that uh, a bunch of positive elements just in the last ten months that get, give us uh, encourage what that we're on the right, headed in the right direction. So.
There's also a fair amount of talk in some of the planning and stuff, the subcommittees that we have at EMS talking about this is future stuff, but other places that people can be transported, right? So maybe not everyone really needs to be transported to an ED. There's a lot of work to go on with that now.
I'll jump into that just a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of, I, I would say, I think all of us at this table could agree that at this point in time, um, well, I'll start with some, some simple, simple stats, and it kind of frames the, the discussion. Uh, Washington State has one of the highest per capita needs for behavioral health beds and one of the lowest availabilities. This has been routinely published by the CDC, uh, and is something that we're, we struggle with. I think.
We think it's because of the rain.
Well, variety of factors. Uh, with that, uh, it also poses, I think, a challenge uh, that in terms of how we treat uh, behavioral mental health and how we transport subsequently behavioral mental health. Um, we, I think we as a system, and when I say system, it's not just locally or regionally, it's statewide, also need to address some of the, the, the lack of bed availability, uh, which becomes extremely competitive um, in terms of placement of individuals. It also tie, and also takes up, and these individuals need the care. I'm, I'm not saying that they don't need the care, but they need the appropriate location for that care. And when we're looking at the appropriate destinations, when we're working with cell cell behavioral health, when we're working with a variety of other institutions, they're wonderful institutions without enough resources or beds.
Yeah.
And so when we're looking at how I'd say the next hurdle that we're trying to, to address is how not only do we effectively transport these individuals and take care of these individuals, their needs, address the needs that they have appropriately and, and in the right location, not in a seventy-two or ninety-six hour times hold, if, if we're lucky, uh, in an ER, but how do we get them the care that they need in the appropriate destination is something that is going to be an ongoing hurdle um, for, for the, a number of years to come. Um, and that plays into all of our efficiency.
So, so when you get to the scene, who determines destination? You know, um, who assesses and determines they, they need to go here, they need to go there, or is that something that's assessed and determined at, at the phone call level?
So there's a couple of different, uh, to answer this just cleanly, there are pre-defined protocols and expectations for EMS providers, but ultimately the end destination is always, it's a patient right, uh, determine where they want to go. However, in order to for an individual to exercise, exercise their rights effectively, they need to be well-informed. Okay? And part of that information is, uh, we had talked about a dashboard in terms of wait times outside the hospital, having a conversation over the, the abilities of the hospital, the destination that they're being transported to, and also where their primary care is held and the seamlessness of, of that, of that care plan going forward. So there's a variety of factors that start with patient choice. Um, and, and as we inform them and as we empower them to make their own decisions, um, there's a variety of factors that go into place. Now, if an individual is unconscious, just to be clear, an individual is unconscious or unable to make that decision, there's predefined paths in terms of the, the acuity of their illness and the resources at the destination hospital that need to be adhered to, that are predefined. So traumas, cardiac arrest, other, other items like that.
Right.
So.
So the problem is choice.
Well, I, I like to, I, I, I was very, very candid with MultiCare and CMC when the transition happened uh, for the purchase uh, that this community is seeing. And when I pull up seventy-five percent to, or seventy-four percent to sixty-five percent transition from MultiCare to CMC, that number, just so you're aware, used to be ninety percent.
Wow.
Ninety percent Providence Saint Pete's and ten percent everything else.
Okay.
And so we have an underlying culture that Providence Saint Pete's served the community, that MultiCare has done a wonderful job of breaking through and marketing, but it's, it's a transition uh, away from where people have primarily received, primarily received their healthcare. And so.
That's, I remember you, you showed us that data dashboard. It's like, like looking at a traffic indicator on Google, like, oh, it's red, I'm not going over there. Has that been helping? Because that's, that's something that can be transparent for patients too, right? When they're making their decision about where to go.
Um, it's, it's a conversation that we are hope, that we encourage providers to have. I can tell you what the traffic across that is, is roughly a hundred to two hundred users per day, uh, which is, which is very good, but that's a variety of users. Uh, we've given access to the hospitals, we've given access to uh, all the agencies. As they're able to look at the dashboard and see where everybody's being transported, a variety of administrators. And so the idea is that that would be available to them, and they can have a conversation with, hey, your, your specific complaint may be able to be addressed in an alternate destination that does not have the current wait time uh, that, that you know, is prohibitive. So.
Well, thank you guys for being here, and we certainly appreciate you guys collaborating and deconflicting um, some of the issues that we have in the community. So, so just know that the council appreciates you, at least I do.
We feel the entire council.
Jeez, Malcolm.
Appreciate you.
Only I care.
Yeah, we all, we all appreciate you.
We have appreciated both the interest and then the collaboration from Chief Brooks, Ben and the team. So just thank you for that.
It's very reassuring to see this much progress made in less than a year's time. So, thank you.
And so hopefully the, the uh, the tribe will be a really nice addition to the work that you guys are doing. And um, with, with that, who knows, we could end up having a full, full, complete system in, in the next twelve to twenty-four months. That would be really nice.
Yeah, deal.
Yeah, as we grow to four hundred thousand. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you guys for being here. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we are going to move on in this agenda, and um, the next item on our agenda uh, is a master plan update from the convention and visitor uh, board. It's a destination master plan update, I don't know, being delivered by Annette? What, Annette?
Me.
Pretty tonight.
How are you?
Awesome. Good to see you and your team. You want to come on? Are you good? You're, you're part of the team.
City Visitors Bureau, City Visitors Bureau.
Yeah.
City Visitor Bureau, City Visitor Bureau.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I remember uh, last time you were in front of us, you were talking about uh, rugby.
Yes.
Yeah. How's that going?
I, I think it's still going, okay? It's still a popular sport.
Okay, I still haven't met Marcus.
Haven't met who?
Marcus.
Oh.
You said he was part of your board?
He's on, he's on the board, yes.
Okay, are you going to bring him in?
I, I will talk to Thor about that.
He should be available, shouldn't he? And uh, yeah, see, Mike wants to meet him too.
Uh, I've, I've met him a few times. He's a good guy. His mom and dad and brothers and stuffs.
And who, who do we have presenting tonight?
So I'll, I'll take it off if that's all right.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. Last time uh, community economic development was before you. We were visioning. Tonight we're prioritizing. So um, we did, as you mentioned, bring um, Annette here, and I apologize, I didn't have you on my introduction list. Uh, Pits to help us with the presentation of the destination master plan that they have been working on at the Visitors and Conventions Bureau, as well as Sarah is here this evening to um, facilitate the conversation about prioritization in the draft plan. So with that, I'll hand it off to you.
Right on. Okay. Okay. That's a new one for me. I think you should go back to the note.
Well, first of all, thank you. I really appreciate getting to be invited in the first place so that we can kind of have a face-to-face and catch up. Hello down there. Um, so I think before we get going, I think it's really important to talk about why we're doing this at all. Like, where did this come from and what does it mean and what were our goals? Um, oh, thank you. T T, I'm, I'm a, I'm a hand talker. Jeff is used to it. So if I accidentally do something crazy, it's, it is an accident. Um, so why we're doing this in the first place is it's the result of when I first came on board, which was in two thousand twenty-one. Um, we, when I was hired, which was just shy of three years ago, um, it was smack dab in the middle of COVID. You know, when you're in the tourism industry and you're in the middle of a pandemic, you have to have a plan. And um, me being new, my board agreed that we needed kind of a short strategic plan to get us through that hump. And when we did that, the consultants that we used, who are kind of the gold standard in the industry, said, girl, you guys have two things you need to work on. One is your community alignment, meaning are you rowing in the same direction with your municipal partners and your community stakeholders? Um, and you need to look at the destination and figure out how you are going to organ, how you're going to address some of the um, kind of shortfalls that we have or development opportunities, I like to call them, in the destination. Um, and so they said the best way to go about this is to conduct a destination master plan. When you do a destination master plan, especially for a countywide plan like this, it makes you create a framework where everybody gets invited to have a seat at the table. So that's the first thing about this plan that was really important is it's not just so that the Visitor Bureau makes a plan for themselves to do what the Visitor Bureau wants. Uh, we're trying to solve two big problems, community alignment and destination development. Um, so we knew we're going to be collaborative, we're going to form a steering committee that brings in all of our municipal partners, all of our tribal partners, key organizational partners, like the EDC, the Thurston Chamber. Um, we really tried, we pushed the limits with our consultants who said you can have eight, and we said, eh, that is not going to work in a nine-community uh, county. We're going to have eighteen. Um, and so I think it was eighteen, maybe it was sixteen. It was sixteen or eighteen. Um, and key tenets of the planning process is obviously we're trying to build on the visitor economy, you know? Tourism is a first date, the people moving to your community. So it is really an important economic development opportunity, but we tempered that by looking at, sure, we want to know what is going to be best for our visitors, but we need to balance that with what our residents, um, the people who live and work here want. Just because visitors say they want it, don't mean they're going to get it. If you guys say that doesn't work for Lacey, then we're not going to pursue it. So um, inclusivity was really important to what we were doing. I talked about that. Um, the steering committee has been meeting every month. Um, we're a part of the steering committee at the Visitor Bureau, um, but we're a small part of it. So in as much as I could say what I think is important, Sarah could say what she thinks is important and so forth and so on. So work to date, um, is what's hiding behind that blackboard. It's okay. Um, I think it's important to understand where all of our findings have come through. Um, it's not a list of Annette's ideas. Um, we started back in June by um, going to RFP um, to hire our consultant. We hired a company called Convention Sports and Leisure International, also known as CSL International. Um, we brought them to the area the first time in September. They were here for three days. Jeff and I loaded them up in a car and we drove to a different Thurston County location every fifteen to thirty minutes for three days straight, twelve hours a day, trying to get them all over the place. Yes, we were in Lacey. We went to the Food Truck Depot, we went to the museum, we had our meetings at the Community Center, we went to Midtown, we ate at Ricardo's. Yes, love that part. Um, also like the food truck. Um, but we, we were really inclusive in where all we were taking them because we wanted to give what we lovingly referred to as awards and all tour. I don't want them to only see, yeah, we've got all these great things. Look at Ricardo's. Look at, we also have some issues. We were really honest about why they're here. Um, we want to figure out a pipeline to taking this destination to its highest level of itself while taking into consideration how, what does that mean to each of the communities we serve, whether it's a municipal community, a tribal government, what have you. Um, they were, um, in October, Jeff, bless him, um, collected over a hundred strategic plans and/or comprehensive or development plans that are currently being used in the community, um, to look at and overlay what are the issues and opportunities that everybody is working on independently, but they're not working on together strategically. So the destination master plan took a look at um, all of that scope of work that's already out there. We did a SWOT analysis, we did an industry trend analysis, we did a COVID recovery analysis, we did a hotel and meeting space market potential analysis. It was a busy time, a lot of analyzing happening. Um, we brought them back again in November. Um, keep in mind, the steering committee is meeting every month, so they're all involved in this process. Uh, we brought them back again in November. This time we did one-on-one meetings. We also did small industry focus groups pulling from all over the county. Uh, so they had one-on-one private conversations with over a hundred stakeholders. So again, people could say, these are the things that we love, we want to protect, we want more of that. These are the problems that we have. These are the things that are missing that we really, really want, and we, we need the Visitor Bureau and the EDC and the Chambers to all kind of row together so we can bring these things to life. Um, we brought them back. What's that? Oh, okay. We brought them back in January again, um, where we did a public forum, we did a visioning workshop series, we had over eighty folks participate in that. I realize I mentioned one of the things on my previous slide, which was the survey. We did a comprehensive sentiment survey that we sent it out to visitors, both people who came to the area and prospective visitors, and then we sent it out to residents, um, asking them it was the longest survey known to man, but we still had over nine hundred people complete the thing. So we know people care about um, this destination, whether you're living or working or visiting here. Um, let's see here, then in February, we did destination benchmarking where we looked at a comprehensive review of review sites and saw, and looked at how do we shore up with our comp set? Um, when people are evaluating, um, as somebody who is a visitor or, or somebody who lives here, where did we fall? It's in that spectrum. Um, and from all of that, I'm going to kind of skip forward on here. We'll go to the next slide. We looked at through all of these, if you look on the top, and I'm sorry, this type is so small, you can see the familiarization tour, observations, collected materials that were analyzed, the, all of the things that we did. We, we found that we came up with this consistent list of twenty-nine that appeared either in all of those different activities or in some of those activities, and these blue boxes indicate where the information floated up. Does that make sense? And then we had to say, hey, steering committee, we need to know, um, not only of that list of twenty-nine, we want you to look at them through some different lenses. And we know that not every lens should be weighted the same. So the lenses are these criteria. So political will to move forward, economic impact, so forth and so on. We sent them a, a poll, a survey monkey. We sent them a poll, a Survey Monkey, and just said, here are the criteria that we think we should evaluate these different projects on. Um, tell us, rank them. How important are these to you? So that we could create weights, so that we could more appropriately evaluate the twenty-nine issues and opportunities that floated up. And this is the representation of what the weights were that came out of the Steering Committee votes.
Um, can you, total non-ELB capital and operating cost, what how does, what does that mean?
What that means is some things that you'll see identified, most things that you're gonna see, to be real, um, most things that you're gonna see identified in there are not gonna be things that the Visitor Bureau can control. I cannot control if somebody decides to build a hotel or a convention space, or if you decide that retail development or rural development is the thing to do. So we're gonna have some costs that Experience Olympia and Beyond can incur to move things forward. Like, if we're talking about community engagement all day long, we can, we can bear that cost and move it forward. But if we're talking about, let's say, you wanna develop Midtown to have a covered I know you wouldn't do that, because I saw your note, because covered things can cause problems, and I heard you, and I saw it, and I thought, yes, girl, I'm gonna get you. Um, but let's say you had a plan to do a public art installment at Midtown. And that might have a considerable capital or operating cost that's not gonna be, it wouldn't come from us.
Right.
So we're looking at those costs that we would cover versus the cost that somebody else is gonna get left holding the bag with. So at the end of the day, sorry again for this tiny, you, um, this teeny tiny list. I actually brought a printed copy, if you wanna, uh, you can, it was kind of, it's not gonna be much easier to read. It's gonna be, you can pass it around if you want. Oh, okay, great. Um, this is how those countywide issues and opportunities shook out after that weighted prioritization activity. So the important thing to note, I can't read it either, and I'm trifocal, it's, I'm so sorry. I don't know why gray on light blue was ever an idea, but it happened, and here we are. Um, so this is how the countywide issues and opportunities shook out. And it's really important to note that these are countywide. So when I was looking at this, and I'll explain those first four bars that are all equal, um, those represent the lenses that we want every one of these line items to be evaluated on. So if we're working on Quamath Resort Complex as a as a line item, we wanna know how is community engagement happening? How are the tribes being engaged in the process? Uh, how is connectivity being discussed? If I was on Lacey Council, I'd be real interested in what the connectivity planning is for Quamath Resort, um, to make sure that people are there is a concerted effort to, you know, move people back and forth. Um, workforce development, we just heard conversation about that, the importance and the issues around workforce, and then DEIA, of course, needs to be a part of everything that we're doing. So knowing that, when I was looking at our final kind of countywide issues and opportunities, I was like, yeah, this all makes sense. And then I thought about, well, yeah. Except, if you're sitting in, let's say you're a member of the Squaxon Tribe, and you're looking at this, you're like, yeah, this this does make sense for the county, but I don't know that this is gonna represent my government's idea of what's most important to me. And obviously, that would be the same for each of our municipal partners, and so we wanted to kind of hit pause and create space in the process to say, now that we know what the overarching countywide priorities are, we wanna make sure that you have an opportunity in the plan, um, through the work that Sarah and Vanessa have been doing, um, to identify what's gonna be important to you, and that's all I have to say. That's all you.
So, uh, thank you. I'll take over from here, and I've been a member, um, I've been part of the Steering Committee for this and and attended all the meetings, and it's been really interesting to see how this is moving forward, but tonight the ask of council is to, um, rank twenty-nine recommendations to reflect the city of Lacey's priorities. So that's a lot. Um, and especially, it's a lot, uh, to talk about in one night, especially when you've had limited time to review, um, any of these recommendations. Um, so to help guide the discussion, um, staff got together, uh, Rick, the direct, uh, the city manager, Vanessa, um, Community and Economic Development, uh, Director, myself, um, Wesley, and then Jenny Wilson with Parks and Rec to discuss these recommendations and take a stab at a first ranking um, for our recommendations. And when you look at these, um, these are based on, um, things that may have the most immediate impact and that are already priorities for the city of Lacey. So when you're talking about sporting events and facilities, if you read the recommendation, the RAC is a big part of those sporting events and facilities as a destination, as a tourist destination. Um, and one of our priorities is RAC Phase Three and development of RAC. So um, sporting events and facilities, outdoor recreation, um, those jumped to the top of us, or to the top of our list, um, as staff. Um, not only because of the RAC, but also development of Gray Cuyo Park, which is coming up next year and could also become a really big tourist draw, especially out, um, in northeast Lacey. Part of, um, sporting events and facilities and outdoor recreation, there's also been some emphasis on Twenty-three kitchens and some of the other private recreational developments, um, that are occurring in Lacey. So, uh, those two came to the top, I think related to those family attractions, um, which is twenty-three, you know, Twenty-three kitchens and some of the other things we have going on. Um, and then obviously the Quamath Resort Complex, because, um, that's gonna have an immediate impact on this northeast area in the city of Lacey moving forward. So these are, this is our top ten list: sporting events, outdoor recreation, Quamath Resort Complex, retail and commercial district development, trails and networks, expanded and diversified lodging. This is a big one all throughout the county. Um, we need more lodging out in the northeast area for the RAC and other events that take place out there. Um, events, festivals, seasonality, innovation and technology, and agritourism and the Thurston Bountiful Byway. And what's interesting in comparing the staff list, um, it's only seven different than what was on the overall countywide list. So it's pretty similar, but our question to council, um, knowing that you haven't may maybe have not had a chance to read through, um, the document in your packet, um, but if you have questions about the recommendations, if we got this top ten list right, and if you're comfortable with us sending this to, um, CSL um, for incorporation into the destinat- Destination Master Planning process. Um, the other thing to remember is that, um, we're giving Lacey feedback on, um, a countywide recommended list of actions, um, for incorporation into the Tourism Master Plan. Um, and like Annette alluded to, these are gonna be different for everybody. Everybody else is also being asked, and the consultant's gonna get a list from every jurisdiction, all the tribes, and it's gonna be their responsibility to kind of filter out and figure out how to best um, rank these. So our number one might not be, uh, everybody's number one, but our seven, our ten reflect in the top uh, from the consultant anyway. But with that, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to council for questions, discussion, um,
reorienting.
Reorienting, yes. Is there something that we can move around? I'm happy to do that, or?
Okay.
So, uh, okay. Is that list in the packet? Because I don't see it there.
This list is not. It's not, right. Right, it's not. So the recommendations are all in the packet. Um, there's a, yeah.
The seven, the seven recommendations.
There's seven, and then there, there should be a, um, there, there should be a second document, an attachment to the staff report that includes the list with the detail, the detailed list of twenty-nine.
Yeah, that's there.
That's there. Okay, okay, good.
I saw that.
Okay.
When I first saw that, I I I thought, what does diversified lodging mean?
You want me to speak to that?
Go ahead.
So one of the things that I've noticed, um, and our consultant has noticed, and a lot of the participants and the process notice, is we have, we're very heavy on economy and mid-scale branded franchise properties. That, um, we do have some higher, you know, end, but there, it's pretty tight in that same kind of mix, which actually is very good news for the RAC, because that works really well for sports team. Um, so I mean, I do think we need more of that, but Lacey is more than just the RAC. Um, Lacey is a place for families to visit. It's, um, there's so many things to offer that those audiences that are coming for those other elements, like fine dining at Ricardo's, they may not want that type of lodging. They might want a boutique property. They might want to stay in something that's maybe like a little mini resort. A co- yeah, there, there are so many different things that are out there, and we are fairly homogeneous when it comes to our lodging mix. So, um, I thought somebody was waving. Um, that's what that means.
Councilmember Dudding, did you wanna weigh in on this?
Yeah, and I, uh, first, I'd just like to say, you know, twenty-nine, and I've been in these meetings, twenty-nine's a lot of things that they they have to go over, so it's a big, it's a big ask for the staff, and they put in a lot of work, and they deserve a lot of credit for, um, for how much time they put into even just ranking these. Uh, so uh, the the one question I had was, and this is something, uh, I've I've brought up, and we've kind of started the the discussion on, um, which I'm not sure which category it would necessarily fall under, which is kind of where 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 I'm I'm wondering where it might was, you know, Lacey's a community where we might not have as many, um, destiny, you know, people aren't necessarily searching for Lacey and visiting Lacey like they would Olympia specifically, so um, but a lot of people end up coming here who are out of town. Uh, maybe they're visiting family, maybe they are, um, from JBLM and coming and and just doing, doing different things, but staying in in our hotels. Um, and so one of the the things that I brought up was, uh, we do a lot of advertising towards people who are who are not here to try to get them here. Um, but I I would love to see us advertise to people who, uh, are coming through and then highlighting and promoting, um, our restaurants, our activities, our family attractions. So that way they don't go out of Lacey to do those things. You know, they don't go to downtown Olympia. They they stay here and they go to Ricardo's, or they, um, you know, go to an activity, the, um, the new pickup ball courts or something along along that line. So where would, um, that fall under, under which kind of category potentially?
So that doesn't really fall under the, under the scope of a Destination Master Plan. That's more of our kind of daily work plan, planning. Um, that said, what you're talking about, I I very much understand what you're talking about, agree with it, and think it's a fantastic idea. We we trialed it a couple of years ago. The, and I don't think at that time the technology was really there. Um, the technology is here for that now, and we could potentially do that. The challenge that we have, and that, it doesn't really kind of, it's not really part of the Destination Master Plan scope, but the challenge that we have is that the way that we're funded, most of our dollars are going to be either tourism promotion area assessments or lodging taxes. And we have to spend those dollars reaching people fifty-plus miles away to bring them into Lacey Hotels and to to br- to bring them to the area. So when we're spending dollars locally for people who are already here, it's very questionable if that meets that criteria.
Right.
Now, if we were to go, we're gonna place those ads in well, it still doesn't bring, I have to think about it. There's probably a way to strategically do it, um, and comply, but it is more of a that's more in staff work planning, um, than Destination Master Planning. Does that make sense?
A little bit, a- and I think I I more mean the, um, maybe the advertising, or you know, advertisement strategy, where where would, um, you know, what what kind of category does advertisement fall under?
Well, it, so marketing, advertising is a part of our marketing scope of work, um, that we just do organizationally. And so that is not necessarily a part of the Destination Master Plan. We would, what we were trying to do is take a look at all of the issues and opportunities that kind of floated up through all the various, you know, meetings and tours and surveys and strategic plans and all of those things, and kind of capture them in the plan. And so advertising really wasn't a part of that. Um, it is something, though, that we're open to receiving feedback on, just in terms of our, you know, our normal operation. If you say, hey, we'd like to see you spending more dollars locally on local advertising for people who are already here. If we could find a funding source for that, that that met the, you know, that worked, we would be open to that. I just think that conversation is probably not a part of the Destination Master Planning conversation. But it is one that we're, you know, we're happy to talk about, you know, advertising planning.
I'm surprised I don't see indoor recreation or or indoor activities on 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 this list of top ten. Uh, and the reason I say that is because, um, you know, it it seems as if for seven to eight, nine months out of the year, we're, in the state of Washington at least, we're doing a whole lot indoors. You know, and I I feel like we have the 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 outdoor, the kind of kind of, well, we've got some good outdoor stuff.
Yeah.
You know, and 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 so I'm wondering, you know,
I think you'll find it in sporting events and facilities.
And family attraction.
And family attraction.
It is, yeah, it's covered in there.
Just really quickly, sorry, apologize. I know there's a lot of people looking to view it. The presentation is now uploaded on Civic Clark as well, so you could go to the slide and you could, um, zoom in on those ones as well. Yes, yep.
Yeah, so the naming conventions may not be indoor activities, but indoor activities are being covered in family attractions, events, festivals, seasonality, and, uh, sports and recreation. It would be one, seven, and eight as we have it identified.
Sporting events.
Yeah.
Just for a little clarity on this slide specifically, the, um, you, we have everything ranked, but at the bottom it has the plan must-have recommendations. Are those saying like, no matter what, we're doing that, or how is that kind of falling in?
Yeah, so that's, um, on the previous slide, Annette talked a little bit about these. These are four things that, um, were decided that um, we're gonna be part of the plan regardless. Did you wanna say anything more about those?
Yeah.
If you look at this slide, it talks about those four. They're evenly weighted. And with each of the other ten top recommendations, they'll take into account how are these four, um, items being addressed.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just verifying that we're pulling that out of the the twenty, the right, okay, that's, I just.
Originally, they were independent line items, but we realized as we were looking at this, like those need to happen with everything we're doing. Like, we can't look at any of these things without looking at how are we being inclusive. We can't not engage the community. We, of course, we have to engage our tribal partners. We need to look at, you know, workforce through everything we're doing. So that's why they were kind of separated out and said these are givens, you know?
And to, with that strategy, staff strategy on prioritization was to not rank them, because we knew at the end of the day they were gonna be in the plan, so let's rank, let's rank the remainder of those items. And so that's why they aren't ranked and set at the bottom, because they're just going to be in there. So we ranked.
That's what I figured. I just wanted to clear that up, just in case.
Yep. Good clarification.
I'm pretty comfortable with this list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things that strikes me is, you know, we had a conversation two weeks ago about the lack of nightlife in Lacey, and so we've got arts, entertainment, live music, and a nightlife on number fifteen, and I would love to see that a little higher on the list.
That's where I was headed.
Okay.
And so, so it it appears as if, you know, a lot of this, okay, don't get offended.
No, absolutely not.
But when I look at this list, I can tell it's made by you guys.
Actually, it wasn't made by us.
It feels very VCB kind of, you know what I mean? Because it's it's so much outdoor, right? And we spend not as much time as outdoor is as maybe sometimes we think. And I say that because, you know, October, November, December, January, February, March, April, I drive by these parks. You know, I ride my bicycle to these parks, and they're empty.
Yeah.
Where are these people at? They're doing stuff indoors.
Yeah.
And so that, that's where the rub is, you know what I mean? For me, it 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 just kind of seems like we're we're still at that point where, yes, we we've got all this outdoor awesome stuff, and we got great parks. I mean, city of Lacey has twenty-eight.
We hear a lot about how much people love their Lacey parks.
Yes, they do.
Yes, we do.
And they visit them as soon as the clouds break and the sun comes out. Uh, but for all that time where the clouds have not broken and the sun has not come out, where are these people at?
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. Um, the thing that I think it's really important to remember, though, is this is not from the VCB. We did, our staff did not write this. So all of this came from a combination of the three days of site visits. It came from the comprehensive plan overlays, so over a thousand pages of planning documents. It came from the one-on-one meetings and visioning, or the one-on-one meetings and industry focus groups. It came from over nine hundred survey respondents. Also came from the, uh, public forum and the visioning workshop. So there were hundreds. There were over a thousand people. None of them were us.
Okay.
So we, we literally cut, we're cutting the check for CSL, but we're not writing this. So it's, and I know you've got two questions, but I just think it's really important for people to know. This is not staff-driven.
Uh, I have a quick comment, too. Okay, oh, um, I, and this just kind of plays on, I think, what my, this one, this was Lacey's priorities, correct? This is what we came up with, right? Okay, so I think at least, and this is maybe like just kind of a devil's advocate type of, uh, comment is like, do we focus on the things that were Comment is like, do we focus on the things that we're already doing and we're good at? Or do we start trying to promote things that maybe people don't know as much about? Um yeah, I I think that's kind of what I'm getting is like, well, we already, we're already so known for outdoor activities, we're already known for. For parks, you know, should we? Focus on things that we don't, we aren't necessarily known for, you know, so it's just a a question of thought, not not a statement at all.
It's a good one, it's a good one, Mike.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor, hey, um you know, overall, yeah, there's not, you know, you know, can't, anyone can nitpick, but. I like, you know, number eight, the events, festivals and seasonability. To be a little bit higher, I think we offer a lot of great um festivals and. And events, you know, Fourth of July. I mean, you know, brats bruising bands, I mean, there's a whole bunch of them, you know, and. And the other one I'd like to see what um. I just had the like conference center and meeting spaces, I think Saint Martin's um. You know, until we get a convention center, a real one locally. Uh we need to promote those partners, you know, the and the Quimuth um. You know, we we've been talking for twenty years that that development is the future of Lacey, you know, and. It's number three and that's great. I think the top three should all be tied really, but um you know, those. I mean, like I said, you're talking about the difference of one or two positions, but those those three are the big ones that I like to see promoted and. And advocate uh advocates advocacy um going, you know, full tilt on, so that's my. Two, other than that, I think it's a wonderful list.
So something.
Some overall, I'm good with the staff recommendation, I mean, there's a couple of things like kind of where Mike was wrong, a couple of things I think might. Need to be a little bit higher, uh family attractions, I think that could be higher than seven, and I think arts, entertainment, light. Uh live music nightlife could be a little higher than we have it at, you know, fifteen, I think we're lacking that in this community and we definitely. I mean, there's nothing to do in Lacey after, you know, six o'clock. For the most part, so I mean, I think those could be higher, I think those need to be, we need to drive those to if we're gonna bring more people into the area. There's something to do after dinner.
For real. And I totally get that this is the beginning of a of a of a master plan. And we're probably gonna revisit this and we may move things around and this is not, you know, going to be etched in stone as of yet.
Right, and it should never be considered etched in stone.
Right.
Yeah.
So 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 I'm 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 excited. At at what I see, but like some of the other council members said, there are some things that I'd like to see a little bit higher on the list. Like family attractions.
Can I frame it maybe just the other way around, if we are moving a couple of items, which we've heard the council indicate that they'd like to move a little bit higher on the list. Are there things that should be bumped down?
I mean, I was, I was gonna be so bold as to say, let's, I hear, you know, arts, entertainment, live music nightlife moving up. So what if we popped that up at ten, then agro tourism. Would then come down into the next bucket, right, if we put it just, I'm just, you know, just throw it out there, at ten, it would go down below.
That's what I was gonna say.
I mean, there's, there's a fair amount of agro tourism in the county, but really, it's not, that's not the base.
So we could.
Like, we don't identify that well with that.
Yeah, we could literally flop the two, because then that would keep the the conference meeting. Up higher than that as well, which I heard some voice about moving, keeping that one up above versus moving that down.
Yeah, and we we, you know, as a community, I know that we're twenty-six percent seniors. Um but we have a lot of families here, a lot of military families, a lot of transitional families um who, you know, really um. Could use some family. Thing for them to do, uh it could be morning, noon or night, it doesn't matter, they have the dollars to spend.
Yeah, we could push that one up to to, like, we could put it right beneath Quimuth Village, so it becomes four.
Yeah.
Family attractions.
Yes, please.
So maybe, am I seeing nods, I'm looking at.
Okay.
People in better, you know, more so than some of the things that are above it, so I would say I would agree with that.
Yeah, and and you know, I also think if we do the first three right, it raises the family.
That's my, that's my whole point.
I I think if we do the first three right, the family attractions come, you know what I mean? That makes sense?
Okay, and then we'll pull arts and entertainment up to ten and then drop everything else down.
Sure, what's, what is innovation and technology?
So like, is that like Makerspace?
Yeah, Makerspace, um the Innovation Park and Tumwater, um some of the other um more. Things that will drive innovation or draw innovative technologies to the city and so.
This incubator type.
Incubator type places, yeah, kind of the idea around Lacey Midtown with its um. Its tagline, live, learn, earn, create, and Lacey Midtown, an innovation district, so trying to maybe build on that and the Lacey Makerspace that's already there, and that's why. Um I pushed to have that one up at number nine, but I'm not married to the list either, so.
Well, now that I know that it's the Makerspace.
Yeah, you're good, okay.
How how do you guys feel about the expanded diversified lodging, and I only bring that up because if if Quimuth Resort Complex goes through, it's gonna have. A lot of that stuff, kind of like that point, um you know, versus. Other things that are gonna, you know, are currently more important, you know, to us potentially.
Okay, so. Uh if if then when. Okay, Quimuth goes online, um we're gonna have a very similar lodging to what already exists. Which is that.
Uh they're gonna have a resort, remember.
Right.
You have the resort facility there.
So they're gonna have the the five-story hotel uh in some, well, I guess they are gonna have the restaurants and restaurants. So that could fill some of that gap, I it it sounded to me like some of the lodging that that you, that the consultant says that we need. Is outside of the realm of the typical um hotel room, Best Western or whatever.
Absolutely, you, I think diversity is key, and the thing to keep in mind is the value of a diverse lodging mix is not just. That you have the new convention center or resort, but you also have. The sales tax revenue that comes from that and the lodging tax, and I understand that Lacey has an arrangement with Nisqually on some percentage of sales tax, I think. Question mark, I think, yeah?
It it's a good question.
I, that's what I've heard. When, when that happens, you're not gonna see any of that logic tax. And we're not gonna see any TPA collections, which is neither here nor there, because I'm still happy that that's happening. But if I was the city of Lacey, I would want expanded and diversified lodging tax, because not only does it serve your. You know, your tourism visitor needs, but when you're thinking about tempering it with what that your locals need and want. You guys need more sales tax for fire EMS and police and potholes, and you also want more lodging tax for your events. So it behooves you on a variety of fronts to, and we did do a market potential analysis for both meeting space and lodging, and we have a lot of. We have a lot of capacity to take on more lodging.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, I'm I'm not saying it has to be in your top done, your top ten, put it where you think it makes sense, but Quimuth is gonna suit, it's gonna meet one need. But I believe that the city of Lacey has more than just that need.
Right, and none of us are adverse to lodging tax dollars.
Yeah.
It and and it just kind of. I hope it works and and I and I'm glad that they that they mentioned it. Um and I I think the driver for that may or may not be, you know, the existing things that we already have. And so it could very well be that, you know, once that goes online, um you know, we may see additional types of lodging come with it.
Yeah, oh, you are guaranteed, because there are a lot of, um I know more than one. Property owner that their business model is they look for new developments, whether it's a tribal resort or a conference center and they. They will pick a property nearby because they want overflow.
Yeah.
So that will happen, but it's just a matter of time, so. I guess the only other thing I would say for you to consider from our standpoint is as you guys, you guys will. Talk amongst yourselves and come up with your final list of of priorities, but. As you're thinking about these and you have specific ideas, like let's say family indoor entertainment, like. Certain kinds of activities that families like to do, like when you go to Bellevue and you go to Din Tai Fung and. You go into that place that has the bowling alley and then there's the golf thing, I'm not a sports person. Um but they, I was there for dinner and there were lines of people. So if you think, if you have specific ideas that you're noodling on, share them with. With these guys, um and specifically our steering committee member, so that when we're reading through um. The more detailed, because the action, the actual destination master plan will probably top three hundred pages. It's gonna be a beast, so I want to make sure when we're looking at our to-do lists, like if. If we know, just like what you did with our last draft, you said, hey, you know what, I would really love to see EV charging stations or what what have you. Let's, let's make sure that we capture that, even if it's just a sentence. So that if somebody is writing a curb grant or a community, whatever, funding mechanism, it's already, it's captured in a countywide destination master plan, it just adds value to it. So I want to add, once you get the the rankings, let's try to backfill with a little bit of subtle specificity.
Yep, which will drive my consult crazy, but here we are. And I can promise you, Sarah is in the details and in the weeds on every single one of those words, so she's, she is looking at all three hundred.
I know she is, I know she is, we appreciate that so much.
Cool, because you guys, I like, your your group oftentimes seems from the outside looking in, like, hey, we're here to promote sporting events and. Concerts and all these outdoor things.
It's really funny.
Seems like that, it could be my bias, okay?
Well, I just think it's funny because previous to coming here, I was a like a mountaineer and a a climber, um and so. I was used to like the outdoors being one thing, and so when I came here, I was like, gosh, where, like, how do I, where's the outdoors, like, how do I get there? But uh but folks here are like, you know, we've got all of these amenities, and I think it's a new person problem. So it's it's good to have these kinds of conversations, so if we know. That you're like, hey, it feels like you guys are really outdoors focused, I can go back to Heidi on my team who does all of our content for social media and say. Ease up on the parks, girl, go to the arcade or go to. You know, yeah, yeah, no, for sure, um. Side note from the destination master plan, like when you have those ideas and those thoughts. Please just email, text or call me. And and so that we just go, okay, we're, because we're trying, um but there's a handful of us, so and we wanna know.
I think one of our goals is to diversify our attraction to to the outside world, to the outside of this county. You know, and and we, I I I don't, I'm not gonna sit here and say that we are. The great place to go to a park or go hike a trail, you know, um or ride a bicycle on a trail. Um however, we are not known for anything indoors. That I know of, except for a small casino in Hoxbury. Right, um and or the Red Wind, and so so, you know, the income uh dollars. Drive by us on I five, but they don't stop. And 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 spend dollars with us for anything entertainment that I know of. Right, with the exception of.
A part of, I mean, when we get outside of the master plan, when we move from planning to implementation. So what is important to note is, as you will see from the list. The vast majority of these are not gonna be led by the visitor bureau, they're gonna be led by the people who this is what your jobs are and will support you. You say, we need whatever, we're gonna be there to help, but one of the things that we can do is using Placer, which we have um. To look at exactly what is your visitation, when you say they're all just driving by, we can now like literally look at what. Not just who's going to your parks or whatever, we can look at the road. And see what, how many are physically driving by and how many are stopping, and are they going to some, are they going to an indoor. Activity in Tacoma, but they're not going to Lacey, well, then let's fix it. So I mean, it's kind of creepy, but we don't have anybody's personal information, so don't worry. Um but those are the kinds of things that I think, you know, you have to start at the top of the funnel, like with what um these ladies are doing. Um once you get settled on that, we we get the plan in action, then we just have to figure out. You know, what are the things, what are the tools and the data that we have to support and arm you to go forward with what you wanna see happen?
Yeah.
Because if you go back to the beginning of why we're doing this in the first place, it's because we want, oh, we are not in lockstep with our stakeholders. And that is not what we want. We want to be growing in the same direction, so.
And so once uh the Great Culeyo Park comes online. Um which could very well be a game changer for this area, I hope, right? I I think that'll that'll bring, that'll bring even more, which is gonna be great, and you know, I've 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 talked to the EDC and I've I've said, you know, hey. Um this next year, one of the things that we really need to be looking at is where are dollars slipping through our fingers, what are we not providing? That we could be providing, um not saying that we have to go and, you know, build some massive funding package to do it or anything like that, but what are we? What are we not in step with?
Weight analysis.
Where's the, where's the funds flowing through our hands that we could be reinvesting into the community?
And those are, yeah, this is a really good conversation, I just wanna make sure we have the ranking right.
Oh, sure.
Before we end today, and I know, I think we can probably keep talking, because I love that you have Placer, we're gonna talk about that later, it's an awesome program. Um but yeah, I wanna make sure we've got this right, we started with the last place we left off, not to derail the great conversation. The last place we left off was, do we wanna move the uh the hotel diversification down and lodging? Did, did we decide whether we wanna keep it there at six, well, it will, it will move down to seven as we move up the family attractions.
I I think that the free market will guide that instead of a a list, if if that makes sense, you know?
Of course, there, yes, that will be a requirement to get hotels here.
So so Quimuth being on there, I don't know, I mean. That's gonna happen with or without us. It it feels like that way.
I think one of the reasons why it's on there is. How do we plan for the area around it? And what are we looking at in terms of our Lacey property or the properties within the city of Lacey and how how they interact in the Hoxbury Business District with Quimuth Village?
Capitalize on that investment.
So, okay, so.
That's good, really.
And it's gonna affect every.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna affect so much of the rest of it, you know, it's, that's a. It it will increase more arts, entertainment, more meeting spaces, you know, more, it's gonna. It's gonna affect so many of these things.
And yeah, and as you mentioned, many of these things are related and connected in a lot of ways, and I think that particular line item is. Really stands out from that's that perspective, you know, it will change our dynamics when we start to look at. How we utilize those dollars of what businesses are coming, what people are coming here in terms of our data set, once it's built and constructed.
Gotcha.
So I have on the list, just in. To get us moving forward, sporting events, outdoor recreation and Quimuth Resort as the top three, as they are on the list. Family attractions as number four, arts, entertainment and nightlife as number five. And then moving everything progressively down, and that would push innovation and technology and. Agro tourism down to the next advocacy.
We wanted innovation.
You want that?
In the top ten.
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll just keep that one up there.
Okay.
And push down accordingly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Done.
Yep, great.
Done.
Please, thank you.
Sounds like you all got what you needed.
Yeah, so and and thank you all for taking the time, this was a big exercise and.
Yes.
We appreciate it.
No, I I think we need to thank you and Sarah, because. You just like put this list together knowing you're gonna kind of get like trial by fire from people who, you know. Have not as much knowledge about and and time that you put into this, so I really wanna thank you guys. Because, you know, you turned it a test, having no idea what the answers were. So, thank you.
You did have help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um and just for your awareness for what's next for this, the process isn't over. Um we're gonna give this list back to CSL and they're gonna put together their draft master plan, which will, um you guys will see again, I believe CSL will probably come, are they gonna come and? Present it?
They are, so we just actually, they're going to come one more time before they present it in April, this was a last minute decision today, this afternoon, just because I think I want the steering committee. To look at the more detailed descriptions um. Forehand, just in case we're missing something, or it's, it's gonna rub somebody the wrong way, I want one more set of eyes on it. So they're gonna come one more time in April for that, for the steering committee, and then um in May, they're gonna come back and present the plan to the steering committee and they're also gonna present it to our board. Um we are gonna be working with a consultant to facilitate our. Board retreat that's gonna be talking about how do we take this completed plan and move it forward? Um what, how, what what is that gonna look like, so because what we don't want to do is say, oh, yeah, we did the thing. Bye, um we want funding streams identified, we wanna know who the leads are gonna be, who are we supporting? Um and then figure out like, how do you guys want to meet? You know, how do you, what what's gonna feel right for you guys, because. What we're trying to make sure that we're doing is again, having an inclusive process that. Feels right for each of our stakeholders, what might feel right for the city of Lacey is probably gonna feel different for the Chehalis tribe, and that is okay. So um that's kind of where our head is at.
Well, I'll say so far you're succeeding.
Oh, thank you.
We feel included.
Good, good. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you guys for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, moving along.
Bye, Jeff.
Bye.
I think that last conversation could allow another.
Good facilitation. The lovely conversation, but we got to get an answer to this question and get on to the next thing.
Next on our agenda, uh, is, uh, our human services grant program update. And it looks like, uh, we will have Shannon Kelly Fong, Assistant City Manager presenting, and Michelle Chavez, Human Services Coordinator.
Good evening, uh, Deputy Mayor and council members. I know I've been sitting up here all night, so it seems kind of funny to say, uh, good evening at this point in time. And we promise we're not going to have you rank, uh, twenty nine or any more priorities than that, but just a few of them. Um, I'm joined here today by one of our newest staff members, and this is Michelle Chavez. And I'm really excited that Michelle Chavez is here to help support the city and its human services grant program. Uh, Michelle is joining us as our human services coordinator. This was one of the positions that the council budgeted in twenty twenty-three and has continued in budgeting here in twenty twenty-four to really help us, number one, stand up this human services grant program to work on our community development block grant funding and also to help with Lacey Veteran Services, uh, hub. And so Michelle has been here with us for the last uh, six or so months, almost six months, uh, really working on, uh, doing some of the groundwork and the research on a lot of these items to come back in front of council and to present here. Um, just kind of set the stage for the human services grant program. This is really, um, building off of, in the past, the history has done a series of grant programs for a variety of human services over time. Um, we've also provided ad hoc human services as nonprofit groups have come to this board and requested uh, funding. And so really, we wanted to replace this system with something that had a little bit more equity built into it in that we acknowledged that there's many gaps here in the community and we really want to take a look and deep study of what those gaps are. And to provide the opportunity for all nonprofit providers to be able to, uh, go through an application process to potentially be awarded these funds moving forward. We also wanted something that was more efficient as well uh, for processing it on the staff side, but also processing it for our nonprofit providers. And then finally, something that is more predictable, knowing when there was an application period and process and what that looks like and what those awards look like and what period of time in which people have to access it. So we're here tonight to run through a draft of what we've come up with and what I should say, what Michelle has come up with for the human services program. And really, we've taken into account kind of the historical funding that the city council has done for those various uh, nonprofit providers that have been funded, but also funding that this body has provided through the community, um, uh, block grant program as well. And use that to build into elements of what we're here to review tonight. And then also, we've done an environmental scan that Michelle is going to get into much more detail. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Michelle and, uh, Michelle's going to tell you about the human services grant program.
Thank you, Shannon. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Thank you for sticking with it, with me. Um, again, my name's Michelle Chavez and I am the Human Services Coordinator for the city of Lacey. I am located in the City Manager's Office. I am new to the city as of October twenty twenty-three, but I am not new to local government. This is my twenty-fifth year working in local government. I worked for the city of Minneapolis for almost twenty years in a variety of different, uh, positions and different departments, public works, community planning, community engagement, neighborhood, community relations, et cetera. And then most recently, I worked in the city, for the city of Prescott, Arizona for four years and I ran their community development block grant program and all their federal grants. And I also, uh, took care of all of their CARES Act funding, so all their COVID money as well, and made sure that that got out to the community. So that's just a little bit about me. Again, as Shannon said, uh, we did get an approval for three hundred thousand dollars in the city budget for twenty twenty-four. And what we want to do today is walk you through our recommendation. And I've, I've, my presentation has four sections, so I'm going to go through the, all four sections. To start out, our recommendation is creating an ad hoc human services work group, conducting a human services needs assessment and proceed with our human services grant priorities for twenty twenty-four. In your packet, you had a draft resolution of what that work group could look like. And, uh, that was included in your staff report as well as a draft application. So again, my presentation is four parts. Part one is a research and development findings of what I discovered while doing my environmental survey of various human services grant programs. The second part is about a needs assessment overview. What does that look like? The third part is a work group overview. So if we do set up an ad hoc work group, what would that work group look like? What would their responsibilities be? How would they be comprised? And then part four is the twenty twenty-four program recommendations. So what, what we're recommending for this year. So part one, research and development. So what did we find when we did our environmental survey? We, uh, surveyed, we looked at a wide range of communities similar to the city of Lacey and mostly in Washington, a little bit in other states. And, um, there was about fifteen communities that we looked at and we narrowed it down to five communities that we wanted to interview and go down, dive down deeper into how their hu- human services grant programs ran. So the communities we talked to were Marysville, Lakewood, uh, Bellevue, Issaquah, Washington and Hillsboro, Oregon. What we found is that all five communities had some commonalities. They all had standalone grant programs. They all had some type of advisory board that helped the council decide on how the allocation would be decided. So the applications would be received by an advisory group ahead of time and they would to kind of take the first look and use a rubric to score the applications and then they would make a recommendation to the council. The council would have the final decision on how the allocations would look. And they all used a competitive grant application. So it was, you know, very, uh, transparent, open to the community, published online. They all did workshops to teach the community about how to apply for funds, et cetera. This is a table, just a brief overview of kind of what those five communities look like, the things that they had in common. You can see they had, um, several things in common with the work group overseeing, um, they, some of them had, um, minimum and maximum awards, some of them only allowed for social services funding and some allowed for small capital projects. So this is an overview of that piece of it where there wasn't uniformity. Majority of them performed needs assessments for their community. One city modeled their priorities off of other nearby communities. Uh, a majority of them only allowed social services programming to be funded, but then forty percent of them allowed smaller capital projects. So because other federal grant dollars don't always allow capital projects, like, so, for example, uh, if you wanted to buy a vehicle or something like that, like CDBG doesn't allow that. So some of them did allow for smaller capital projects.
On that one, Hillsboro and Marysville, where they did have the small capital projects, they did both, right? I mean, some, even though there's they did both, social ser- social service funding and small capital project.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so real quick, um, if, if we chose not to go with small capital projects, would that eliminate, uh, places like Grub? With the Victory Farm, there was another couple people who came in who wanted some dollars so that they could help repair the homes of, of some senior citizens or displaced people? Would that, would that net, would that rule them out if we, if we only went with social services?
So, Councilmember, and I think you're referring to some of our community development block grant funding. Uh, we do have programs with Grub outside of community development block grant funding and provided other funding too for affordable housing efforts. The, the, the projects, if they are like things like the, the Grub and the Victory Garden, those are more service-based projects.
Okay.
Whereas capital projects would be things like constructing or repairing new facilities.
Right, like critical home repairs?
Correct, and that is.
Together.
Yep, and that's our community development block grant funding.
So, so we would be separating, uh, okay.
Yeah, we're going to get more into that too. That's going to, we're going to get into more detail about what would those projects look like. Uh, but capital projects are more brick and mortar type and community service based are more, uh, obviously service based projects. And we're going to get more into the kind of priority areas.
All right, and, and so, so I guess, I guess to, to finite my question, rebuilding together Thurston County, is that a community service project or is that a capital project?
So for the critical home repairs, that would be a capital project. And what Michelle's just going over right now is, hey, here's what we saw the other jurisdictions do. There were some that provided, you know, capital, there were some that were providing, you know, capital and services, and there were some that were only providing services.
And I apologize for jumping ahead.
No, we appreciate the questions. We appreciate it.
When I reviewed it, I.
Very good questions. And it's important to know that when we were looking at these, we wanted to make sure that any of our existing partners, they would still be eligible to apply. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't eliminate any of our existing partners from applying for these funds. People who have gotten funded by the city of Lacey in the past, would still be eligible. So, um, just so that was a brief overview of the differences and the similarities between the different programs that we surveyed. And now I want to get into the needs assessment portion of the presentation. So a needs assessment, as I said, almost all the communities that we talked to did some kind of needs assessment. So that was how do you set priorities for which human service programs and projects you fund. And so this is just a snapshot of a few of the ones that I reviewed. Um, Issaquah, Bellevue and Lakewood all did community needs assessments. And what that is, is it's a comprehensive survey of the community regarding human services. So what are we doing well? What needs to be improved upon? What services could we expand upon? And then the needs assessment can inform your future strategic planning for the city. It can inform your comprehensive plan update that we're going to be working on going forward in the near future. So we are recommending that we move forward with a human services needs assessment for the city of Lacey as we roll out this project.
Have we done one before?
No.
This is our first one.
Correct. So who does the needs assessment? It's performed by staff with the help from others as needed and it results in a strategic plan and a report to the community. What's really neat about this is it allows for community participation and setting of budget priorities. So when we say, what are we going to, how are we going to emphasize which funds are going to be spent on which types of human services, this needs assessment will help us get there. Um, we would like to work with an oversight body, an advisory group to help us, um, which includes subject matter experts. So people who have experience in human services and social services. And if we do a good job at it, it's going to take several months to complete something like this. So most of the projects, it can take up to six months to complete and it's updated every couple of years. So just like a strategic plan, you want to look back at it. Where are we? How are we doing on meeting our goals? Do we need to amend? Do we need to revise? We need to go back to the community and revise our priorities.
So, so when it says, um, with assistance from others as needed, would others, who does others include? Uh, uh, other, are you, are you, are you suggesting that like, hey, we, we're going to reach out to Habitat for Humanity and we're going to reach out to um, these different places? Does, does, would, would the, the Commission on Equity be one of those?
One hundred percent. It is going to be an extensive community engagement process. And this is an example of what that looks like. So for the, for example, this is Issaquah's community engagement plan. They have a population of around forty thousand. They're actually smaller than Lacey. And you can tell they did a very robust, uh, engagement plan. They met with over forty different stakeholder groups. They did one-on-one interviews. They met with all their advisory boards. They did focus groups with youth, with older adults, non-English speakers, with, uh, people receiving services. So it would be an extensive, um, engagement process to do the assessment. So this is what it could look like. Uh, interviews with community partners, nonprofits, faith-based organizations, an online survey open to the entire community for several months, um, focus groups with older adults, youth, uh, people in the school district, recent immigrants. And then we would definitely reach out to all of our advisory boards. So I know we're planning on talking to the Commission on Equity this month, later this month and getting, getting them started in the process early on, because I think they're going to be a really critical partner.
Were you thinking staff-led or are you thinking hiring consultants to do the work?
This would be staff-led.
So we have the capacity, staff capacity to do this?
Correct. So this is what it would look like if we didn't need the assessment. Phase one would be March to May, which is would be me, me working on all the research, survey development and creating a community engagement plan. Uh, phase two would be doing all the outreach and engagement. So that would be doing the focus groups, interviewing our partners, uh, meeting with our advisory boards and engaging our, um, community groups on best practices and what the needs are. Phase three would be to write the draft report and present that to the work group. And then phase four would be to, uh, present the draft to the city council. So we're actually working, we're recommending to work in collaboration with a advisory group of experts who would be giving us kind of feedback and they would take the first draft and give us feedback and how to make changes and improve upon it before it got to you all for final approval. Uh, the next part of my presentation is what would that human services work group look like? Again, there was the resolution in your packet. Uh, a draft ad hoc work group to help us with this work. So we're recommending a seven-member advisory, five members of the city of Lacey, up to two UGA members. So that's the urban growth area. We would definitely include a youth member. I think our youth council is going to be critical partner and, and getting this work done. And they are going to have their ears on the ground as to what's happening with our youth in the community. And then as you saw, the resolution specifies details of, you know, who would be in the group, would they be compensated? Are they, could they get the stipend program? Um, how would the group be organized? How would they be removed if we needed to remove a member, forum, et cetera?
How do you define human services experience?
That's a great question. And in that, there's a draft application in your packet. And one of the things we ask, questions we ask is work or lived experience. So we're looking for at least two people who are on the group that have actually had either experience as a client or they're, uh, licensed professionals such as social work. But that doesn't preclude someone from participating if they don't have a license. So there's an option to include your resume. You may be, you know, a peer counselor. You've worked in the school just for a long time or, so we, we open that up to both experience and work life experience and work experience.
Cool.
Thank you. So if we were to open up applications later this month, we could have our first meeting in early June. That's with council approval, obviously. We would go through the regular advisory board process for review. And people would submit applications online and we'd make them available in person, in paper, excuse me, as needed. And then we would, um, bring that forward after the first interviews to the council for approval in May and then have our kickoff in June. So what would they do? They would meet once per month as needed or as needed, uh, review the application. So again, that is a group that would look through and score with a rubric all of the applications before they get to you all. And then make a recommendation to you all on how to, uh, allocate that three hundred dollar, uh, po- three hundred thousand dollar pot of money. Uh, they would also help us make, uh, recommendations for longer-term priorities for grant funding and then make a recommendation on should we have a standing human services advisory board? Or should this just be a work group with a beginning and a middle and an end?
Would, would they also be, um, forming the criteria for the grant applications that would result in the scoring?
That's the next part. That's, the next part is the program recommendations, because we're recommending that we, we can set the priorities kind of internally for this year. But then that needs assessment is going to help inform priorities going forward. So that we take the needs assessment, we get the feedback from the community, we hear from them, what are, what should our priorities be in twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, pending there's funding for this program. And then we make, we make the recommendations to the council based on what we hear from the community.
That makes a lot of sense, actually, because that, that's such a long process.
And.
It could take up to six months to get it completed.
I think, uh, part of the question I heard though too was on the scoring and making the recommendations. And that would certainly be something that this work group would be reviewing as well as part of the process.
So am I to understand there is not an existing rubric and it'll be created through this process?
It'll be created for the work group. And they would review it. They would see it at the first meeting. They would give us feedback, you know, where to make changes, how to improve upon it. And then they would be using that rubric to score applications going forward. So as I said, a, a really good needs assessment can take up to six months, uh, best practices. And so we wanted to help with the council setting some priorities for twenty twenty-four, so we can move forward, um, in a expedient way. So these are the priorities we're recommending for year one is essential social services for low-income and special needs populations. Uh, focused on basic needs. So when we were doing our environmental survey of other communities and we were interviewing all these five communities, they all kind of had their priorities around this. Um, expanding housing, uh, affordable housing, housing projects, emergency rental assistance, things like that. Um, survival, which is basic needs, access to food, water, shelter, et cetera. And security, which is a little higher level priority. I mean, excuse me, not a higher level priority, but a higher level focus is job training and placement, uh, mental and physical healthcare, uh, alcohol recovery, support in times of personal and family crisis and transportation. We are recommending to allow for both social services and capital projects for year one. Capital projects, um, under fifty thousand dollars. So again, that's brick and mortar. Capital projects, um, under fifty thousand dollars. So again, that's brick and mortar. So if someone needed to purchase, for example, a van for a food bank or something like that, they would be eligible. That's considered a brick and mortar. We don't have a huge pot of money, so that's why we did have a cap recommendation. Because if some, you know, capital projects can be extremely expensive. They rarely get done in one year also. And my experience has been they usually take more than one year to complete because there can be supply chain delays. There can be, uh, different things that impact permittinging, et cetera. So for this first year, we're recommending a cap on capital projects.
Is this, is this like a reimbursement type situation or, or, or is it, is it pretty, are, are you, are you front-loading the funding? How's that?
You'd be on a reimbursement basis.
And we are also recommending that, uh, agency can, uh, apply for multiple programs and projects, but a different application for each project. Not to confuse our reviewers. It could get really confusing if they're, um, some, trying to submit multiple projects. And I would work with applicants ahead of time to make sure that they knew how to apply and that they were understanding. You know, this application needs to be separated out, or, you know, you've got two separate projects here. Let's do two different applications. And then no minimum award. So if we move forward with the recommendations as we have in the staff report today, we think we could, um. Have the applicant workshop, ac- applications open June tenth and have an application workshop June thirteenth. Which would be open to anyone who wanted to apply. Um, work group recommendations early August, council approval August and September. And then the funding year cycle one would start October one, twenty twenty-four and go to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I have a couple, uh, quick questions. So the coun- the council would be the final approval authority for, for the projects, correct?
Correct.
And then, um, would we be getting, you know, just like roughly that cutoff of three hundred thousand? You know, worth of projects or would we get, let's say, you know, five hundred thousand worth of projects? And then we rank them and determine which ones would be funded?
Council member Diane, that's a great question. Um, typically what my experience has been, there's always a much larger ask than what we actually have. So we typically would get a request, we would get more requests than we actually have in that pot of money. And then that's why we would have the advisory group make, help us make decisions on what would get funded.
And so that's, that's kind of where my question, uh, lies. Is the advisory group gonna present us basically just three hundred thousand worth? And then we're just okaying it? Or are they gonna present us more than that? So then, cause we won't really have. Much say in it if we're just saying, okay, yeah, we'll approve what you say. But are we gonna see? All of the projects? Does that kind of make, make sense?
So maybe if I could just jump in really quickly, council member. So, um, the advisory board group would make recommendations. So they'd be doing the deep dive, hearing like presentations and getting information, keep scoring, you know, uh, the applications on a rubric. And then making a recommendation to the city council as far as funding, but final discretion for funding would be the city councils.
So, so would we know about all of the projects then or just the one?
Okay, we'll know about them all and we will fund them, um, which, which ones we choose. But we also have the option of different funding levels, uh, for, for each of them.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm new to this, so I'm just trying to, you know, figure out how it all, how it all tied here. So thank you. That, that's great.
Please.
So in, in the past with C D B G in particular, we go, as the council has always heard those presentations. And then made the determination on the funding. I, and I kind of like the council. I mean, I, I personally thought that was pretty impactful stuff in actually hearing those recommend. Hearing the actual presentations from the, those who are seeking the money from the city. I mean, I, I just, I, I'm not, I'm not sure I like the idea of being taken out of that as a council. Because we're making the final decision on the funding, but if we're not hearing those presentations. We're not getting the deep dive. We're not, we're not, we don't know what they're, we don't know enough about them and not to make that decision necessarily without seeing some of that presentation.
Yeah, I can double park on that because when critical home repairs came to, to, and, and they asked for thirty. And I listened to the work that they were doing, I thought they should have asked for more.
I mean, I gotta tell you, in my twelve years on council, the hardest, probably the single hardest decisions I think I've ever been involved in. Were the C D B G funding decisions. Because you always have at least two to three times the available money being requested. And there's not ever one that you don't wanna find. I mean, you know, we had multiples of how much money there is. They all sound great. They all are things that are, I'll be clearly worthwhile. But I don't know, I just think we'd miss out on a lot by not hearing those presentations. That's my concern.
That kind of goes back to the worry that I was, that, so that, that's a, a much easier way to explain kind of what I was thinking too, Lenny.
So council members, I think there's certainly a way that we could make sure that this council receives presentations, especially of any recommendations. And if there's any questions from the councils about particular groups, we could certainly make sure that we. Frame the program so that this council would have the ability to view presentations if so desired.
If, if I can, I just wanted to piggyback on what Lenny and everybody is saying, you know. I, I can't say how much those presentations, uh, impact this, the, my decision, you know, one of seven. On how those fundings happen, but I wanna apologize for the background because I had to plug my iPad in, it was gonna die. Um, but, uh, yeah, that's, I think Lenny's spot on, so.
Yeah, I think that's, that's something that seems like we're, we're gonna get a majority on, is that we still would like to interview these applicants. Um, or take a deeper dive, um, and listen to their story, um, if, if possible, maybe in a work session or something.
And there's nothing to preclude, I think, the good advisory group and the council from having a joint meeting. And as long as we post that there might be a quorum, any, we can have as many council members as we want come to the presentations.
I think it's worthwhile to create a somewhat objective or standardized framework for the way that we assess the requests for funding. Because like, the last time we did it, somebody wasn't able to be here, the day that we did the. The planning for like who was gonna get which funding. And I think that may have had an impact on how we made the decision. So having this kind of standard approach makes it a little fairer. But I agree, I, I still, it's meaningful to me to know that these organizations are helping people in the community. But maybe we can do both. Maybe we can have that joint meeting.
I like that.
And we could potentially offer, maybe they could put a short video together if they can't make, you know. I think there's ways, you just, you're right, like, we should be able to hear everybody and give them that opportunity.
That's the great thing about hybrid meetings now too, is that I've had folks present from Hawaii for their grants because they were on vacation. They didn't wanna miss the meeting, so they presented from wherever they were.
I think another key part of this program is also going to be, you know, reporting back to the council too. On how that spending has been used and hearing from the groups that received the funding and how it helped their efforts in the community.
That's awesome.
Having these specific criteria for making decisions on recommend, recommendations for awards is so important. I've been involved now for, I'm in my seventh year of doing it in the housing. Sector and one thing we, I wanna build into this is that. The advisory group gets supported because there's nothing more demoralizing than spending hours and hours and hours. Of reviewing applications and discussing and all, all the steps that have to go before they would. Make it, you know, this would come to this council. And then to have council to shoot down, you know, here. I mean, it, it, it's lethal to having a, you know, a well-functioning organization like that. So everything we can do to de-politicize this, I think, will help it move more smoothly. Uh, not only within the advisory group and the council, but among the social service agencies and others. Who will be applying for this. Um, part of the reason we have a regional housing council now is that there were really hard feelings that, that have happened. In the social services communities about the way funding decisions were made and. Things were, you know, got undermined or the perception was that that happened. So I, I really love that you all are kind of on this track and would encourage the council to support that.
And the, the members of, shout out, how group, um, would be, um, eligible for the stipend that we, the city stipend that we, we put together?
Correct. So this is, um, one of my last slides. I appreciate you sticking with me on this. I know it's getting late. And, um, this is just kind of the overview of what the program could look like. Uh, and how it would parallel with the needs assessment. So, you know, how would they work together? How would they look, um, side by side? And again, um, I, I know I'm blocking the bottom here a little bit. But it would, basically, we would want to try to get the money out the door by October first. Um, and we would get the, you know. App, the application, the, um, recommendations in early August to the city council. And then, um, we, during July here, as we get the applications in. If we wanna do a joint meeting with the different advisory groups and have kind of a hybrid version, we can definitely work on that. And posting that there might be a quorum, that you all are participating. And, um, like I said, the good thing, there's good things that came out of the pandemic. And one of them was having these hybrids where people could present remotely too.
So, so I have a question. Um, is it, is it, is it still possible that we can fund October, November if? If we have one more work session on, on this, because this seems like it, it came pretty fast. And I, you know, the entire council's not here, um, saying, hey, let's move it for a vote. Um, this, and so, so I was, I was really hoping that maybe, I don't know, I, are you guys? Very true.
There's six out of seven.
Very true. And, and if you guys are saying like, you know what, we're ready to vote on this. Then, then I. Okay, I won't slow this down then. I won't. I, I was just, I, I thought about it earlier, uh, last, late last night. And I was like, man, this is, this is coming hard and fast. And that we get one work session on it. And then we, then we gotta say yes or no to it, right? And I thought, well, man, I don't know. Right, but we didn't really get to chop it up as, as, as I thought we.
No, we don't do it a lot, but we absolutely can have open discussion at those, at a regular council meeting. Any of these, we don't do it as much as we should, but those meetings are, you know, a great time to have, to hash these things out as well.
It is, it is. And I, and I, and I told Rick earlier today, I said, Rick, you know, I. I, I, I see it, it's fast, it's aggressive. I don't know if I wanna slow it down. I, I, I feel like maybe this is a two-work session thing. Um, but you guys are saying, hey, let's, let's go ahead. This is, this is a no-brainer. Let's vote.
I'm not concerned because I think we're still gonna have a, a voice. We're still gonna have the opportunity to see what's happening. And we're still gonna get the presentation and ultimately it will still be our decision.
Council member Cox?
I totally agree with what Robin's saying. And, yeah, just, this is till launch. And then we can tweak and, uh, in, in years going forward.
I know, and I've said the same thing about different issues, you know, different things that came hard and fast. And, and I have that opinion. I just saw this. Council member Dunning, your opinion?
Yeah, I, I agree. And I think the, everybody from what it hears is really in alignment on this. And I think we all, and the scorecard's a great idea, the getting access to everyone's a great idea, the inputs, you know, I think we're all at the same place, so.
Mike, you still there?
I am. Uh, you know, normally, nor- normally I'm open for new ideas. I really am. But I don't know, my, call it my spider senses or what, I just, maybe I'm just stuck in the old way of, of doing things. But I really enjoyed the process of how, how we've done it. And I think it really works. You know, you're gonna see the personal side of it. You're gonna, you know, doesn't mean I'm not open for change though, um, you know. I'm just reluctant because I think it works, you know, and if it's not, uh, if it's not broke, why fix it till it is? I don't know.
Sounds like we're ready to move this on to the full council. Um, but we don't wanna be removed from, from the process in terms of, you know. Being face-to-face with these people, um, and giving them a chance to come and see us and tell us their story. So, so if there's, if there's somehow we can be a part of that process, I think everybody here. Um, is, is ready to move this to a council vote.
That's wonderful. And we would definitely encourage anyone who is selected for funding throughout the process to come and talk to the council. And talk about, you know, how their presentation, how, give a presentation on how the project went. And, you know, how, how things turned out, um.
Post-funding, we're, because we're kind of talking about pre-funding.
So, so both council member, um, I think the idea would be, hey, you'll take a look at, you know, setting up this group. And then having that opportunity so that everybody gets to be and participate and hear the, the presentations. And then hopefully at the end of the cycle, you'll also get to hear about the impacts from some of the organizations.
So, so is that, is that something where like, we can have presentations at a, at a work session?
Correct, yeah. You had a future work session, there would certainly be check-in.
Do a joint meeting with this advi- new advisor.
And I heard that word.
And here are the presentations.
Okay, alright.
These would also be great things for something like Lacey Life to, to highlight. I think we just, these are gonna be great stories and for our community. And I, I wanna make sure that the community, um, hears them and then gets inspired to do more work and have more people apply. And, and, and keep moving it forward.
Awesome, yes.
So pre and post, we're pre and post.
Yes, we wanna be a part.
Hundred percent.
Okay, I, I apologize if I.
No, that's, that's okay. That's, that was the end of my presentation. I just wanted to recap. We have at the beginning, we were recommending to work with this work group with the councils being included. We would love to do this human services needs assessment and obviously with the help of the work group, the community, and bring it to you later this year. And then approve the priorities that we outlined for this year as kind of the pilot year. So we're just for twenty twenty-four. And then, once we get the feedback from the needs assessment, we would come back and say, here's what we heard from the community. And here's what we wanna recommend for going forward, twenty-five, twenty-six. And then there would be no action needed today. We would actually bring forward a resolution to create the advisory to the ad hoc work group. Next council meeting.
Okay, is there anything further from the council?
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Credit to Nick for hanging in there.
Hey, let's go another hour. Let's, let's do it.
He'll be alright.
Yeah.
So apparently that brings us to the end of tonight's agenda. Um, thanks for everybody for sticking in there. I know it's, some of the conversation get a little bit long, but that's what work sessions are for. So, uh, i- unless somebody else has something they wanna add? No? Okay, well then, with that, uh, if there's no objection, I will call this work session adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.
Really good meeting.
Good night, guys.